...the special meeting of the village board, April 30th, 2014. Time is now 6:34. You're right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rusty Gonzalez.
Here.
Brady.
Yes.
Paulston.
Here.
Lauren.
Here.
Huh?
Here.
Grace.
Present.
Open to the public, agenda in its own way. Please leave your comments in three minutes. Come to the podium and give your name and address, please.
Margraft, 2725, 3 South Timberlake, Illinois. I'm speaking on behalf of WPAAL. I understand the budget is being discussed today. I would like to know what effort is being made for WPAAL. As I understand it, they submitted a budget for $3,000. The WPAAL has gone to seek to raise in many, 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 many years. And $2,000 is an absolute hit compared to the $100,000 pounds around here that for their television work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Margraft, I believe there was an integral agreement that was entered into roughly three years ago, and I believe, I will check, but I believe that agreement called for how the donation is supposed to be made. So we'll look at that agreement, but I believe that was entered into off the top of the hedge worth three years ago. So we'll have to look at that.
It's fine. I'll have Mike Margraft contact the village.
Just to clarify, I believe the process for that does indicate to contact the liaisons of the...
I believe you're right.
And without the each member of the IGA to interact, we can't take the part ourselves to adjust it.
I believe you're right.
Okay. Anybody else? Is that better to yours or not?
Sid Russman, 25654 Firestone. As liaison to WPAAL, I did review that documentation and it's correct. The three villages have agreed $2,000 for here.
Okay. Mr. Russman, if I may, just in regards to that, I know this is still pertaining to finance, so we can still discuss this. Do you know, has WPAAL reached out to you already, the other members of the IGA liaisons, I guess is what the term was?
No, to any person. I can't speak for the other...
Okay.
He has, he has reached out to the other villages.
No, no, to, to the committee itself, the IGA committee that was...
I don't know what, I don't know who composes that committee.
Okay. I know Sid is our representative on that, so, okay. Anybody else for open to the public?
Just to comment, Mr. Mayor, with that being said, WPAAL does an excellent job. We get a lot of feedback from residents that are watching it. We appreciate the work that they're doing.
Right. Okay. Is that anybody else on open to the public discussion of village finances? It's been posted on the village website, a draft copy of the potential budget, and it's been provided each of the trustees as well at the last meeting. Looking for, I'm not looking for motion to approve or anything like that. I'm not going to vote on the budget tonight, just to be clear.
Mr. Mayor, is it possible for Daryl to come up and walk us through the...
Absolutely. I just wanted to know if there's any other... Come on, Daryl.
What was that, you doing? I guess I'll start with the general fund. What I did with the general fund and coming to my revenue numbers, basically looked at the Illinois Municipal League, the percentages and the, I guess, guesstimates that they, they put out there regarding revenue coming into the municipalities of Illinois. What they do is they take a per capita number of the people in your village and they estimate a dollar amount per person in regards to real estate, I'm sorry, not real estate taxes, but state use tax, sales tax, and in some cases, motor fuel tax. What I did there was, you know, in your old budget reports, in the right margin, I put in some, some kind of statement based upon what that, how I got to that number. I don't know if anyone wishes to go line by line through it, but in the margin there states how I arrived at the number that I came to. Revenue for the general fund, for that, the general department, I got it to 3 million, 3,018, which is compared to the projected amount of about 3 million issues. So there's a small percentage increase going forward for fiscal year 15. Overall, the general fund currently has a deficit amount of about $30,000 as compared to, excuse me, the previous year. The previous year, which we budgeted almost a million dollars in a deficit. Currently, for the fiscal year 14, we're projected to be about $230,000 in deficit amount. We tried to make the general fund a balanced budget, and we're just, just under $30,000. I tried my best to, once again, with the expenses, put in some, some idea of how it came up with that number.
So I did have a question on this first section here. I noticed our state use tax in two years ago was 248K. This year, or last year, I'm sorry, of 13, it jumped up to 718K. Where did that increase come from?
I'm sorry, which one are...
That would be, this is state use tax?
313.
313, yes.
For last year, 2013, 718.
No, that was actually, that's real estate tax.
Second line.
State use tax at the 62?
Yeah. Did I say, I'm sorry, I said it's the real estate tax, 311.
Real estate tax at 311 for...
It jumped from 248K in '12 to 718K in '13.
What I found with, with the real estate taxes and different, in different years, they were allocated in a different way. Now, I don't know if that depends on past levy, the way it was set up, where most of it went to the general fund, but according to the levy that we passed in December, the real estate taxes will be allocated based upon how I have in the budget here.
So even though in '14 it's at 358, you're projecting 567 in '15? This is coming year.
For the five...
567, so...
568.
And how, and how come another big jump then?
Give me from what we have currently in '14.
From 358 now back up to 567?
It's actually 568.
568.
Far right column.
Okay.
I want to be sure we're looking at the right columns. The far right column where it says new budget '15, that's for the '14-'15 fiscal year?
Right.
Okay, but still, I'm looking at spent in '14, 358, and budgeted in '14 is 567, and now the new budget is 568, so I'm just wondering.
It was, it was brought to my attention today, actually, with Nord, the treasurer, that our allocation was off. So when you get your new, your next monthly, month end package, that will be corrected, and it is.
By being off, you mean that the actual for this year would be more?
Yes.
The actual what?
What are you projecting this year's actual, the big budget?
We had in there budgeted at...
358, 685. What are you projecting it to be?
I think we were close to 4, 468, I believe it was.
Daryl, was this the account that we had a general entry from last year?
That is correct, yes.
So part, part of the reason this year looks different is because of that entry, right?
That is correct, yes.
In other words, last year's number of 718 was artificially high?
Correct.
Which made this numbers artificially low?
Oh, yep.
Okay.
Which is your magic 285?
I'm a little, might question the gaming number only because I think most of this year we weren't collecting that, and it seems to be coming on strong. I think that might be a little low, and might be, we might see a little more on that the next year. Not significant number, but...
On 3 to 6?
Yes. You got a feel for that?
Yeah, I, I didn't have any, anywhere to go in the past to look at history, so I tried to stay somewhat consistent.
I don't believe we started collecting that until September, did we?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Yeah, so if we're going to get 22,000 or 25,000 this year, I would think that easily we would potentially even double that for next year. Yeah, I've been... I believe that's a low number.
I don't know if we'll double, but we should at least be on, on par with our projections for this year, I think, at the very least.
Well, that'd be very conservative. If we didn't start collecting until September, and not all the establishments had it in September, several of them didn't come online until December, actually.
Your problem is, I mean, here's the deal, we either have to identify, if we're going to have a balanced general fund, we're either going to have to identify another 30,000 of revenue that we can truly expect, or we're going to have to cut 30,000 in expenses. So I guess what I'm asking to you is, what do you think is reasonable for a, an adjustment in the revenue for video gaming? We're projected, if I read this correctly, we're projected at 25,000?
Correct, yes.
And you only have budgeted next year for 20,000?
Correct.
So...
Which...
Me, I think 25,000 over a seven-month period is, is about 3,500 a month. If you take that times 12, you're up around 40,000. I would think 40,000 would be a safe number, given the fact that most of them are just now really coming on board the last few months.
Just, just to clarify, this is your budget, you guys, this is your discretion on this?
I'm good for 20,000. No, just so...
No, and actually, I, because if we're kind of new with this too, I would tend to be conservative of that number too, because it probably depends on the business that those establishments are doing. We're pretty much at their...
Yeah.
So what...
Do we have any more gaming establishments coming on, or are we pretty...
Well, towards the, towards the end of the last year, towards the end of last year, we had, look, Maryland's had actually late in the, late in the, just what, four months ago, actually, five months ago? Right around December, okay, come on, yeah. They actually added their gaming machines at that time, so even at that, while we might have started some back in September, we had theirs that were added on, say, January, December. And we're not going to see the revenue from that immediately either, because it's a delay with the state, we're behind one month or two with, behind that.
About two months behind.
Just curious what, well, again, if we're going to collect 25,000, we're certainly going to do more than that next year. And, and to me, I mean, I want to question some of the expenses for sure, but to me, this one, the tax will go up.
So what do you think, 40?
I think 40 would be a safe number, just doing the math from a mathematical point of view. I think it likely probably would be higher than that. I'm not making a moral judgment here, I'm just saying that we have it, we're collecting money on it, I think it's going to go up. We're going to have 12 full months of collections here. Have we had some go online since beginning of the year?
Just Jan, well, just Maryland's was...
Maryland's, but I don't think, Mulligans just came on at the end of the year. Several of them were delayed quite a bit. I know Mulligans right at the end of the year came in.
And we're not going to reflect this until it actually comes into us, which is, wouldn't you say two months behind on our revenue? So even if they did start, say, September, or whatever, we're, we're going to be a couple months behind, so... It's, again, it's your discretion, what do you guys want to do? You want to adjust that number?
How's your 40,000?
I think 40,000's a safe number.
Daryl, do you want to make that adjustment?
With that being the case, could we talk about what the line 383 donation reimbursement, what that is?
So just a few lines about that one?
In this line, there were donations slash reimbursements, I guess, from Fall Fest? Was it Fall Fest? From events that, that the village has had, and what happened was, almost like a donation for the event, and I, in particular, I can't, I believe maybe Mitsubishi may have been one?
So this is where the sponsor money went in for the Fall Fest?
This is a revenue side of that.
All right, that was my question. I thought it was, I wanted to clarify that.
I would think this would be the revenue from the Fall Fest.
I don't, I don't know if it's revenue from Fall Fest, but from events that, I, I guess... I'm trying to think of something that...
I think, if I can interject, I think it's a positive service donation for fireworks, for kids' day.
But there's one in here from two years ago that's 118,000 dollars.
Just to clarify, in 2014, we didn't actually receive any revenue under that line item?
That was just a budgeted amount.
Correct.
So in doing a new budget, is that something, since, like, something like this can be just more clarified than miscellaneous anything, that, you know, if it's a fall fair reimbursement, then it's under our...
Yeah, but even, even the Fall Fest was actually under the parks area.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if this, this whole thing can go away?
I would think that it, it's a revenue, and if we can't identify the legitimate source for that revenue, it shouldn't be in there.
Well, that, that's my point, yeah.
Point taken, so. And historically, I suppose, you know, we could run, do a research real quick to find out what the previous years were on that, but if, if we're putting things in more specific line items, chart accounts, then I think you get a point there, this should probably be simply removed.
No, I, I would think we'd want to pull that one out. I mean, I realize we're playing games in some respect with me and the same number for the total, but I don't see that one.
And then a few lines under that 389, it says miscellaneous income, and so that's another one, and what kind of stuff is that?
That one is anything that basically doesn't have a line item here. Typically, I don't like to use miscellaneous because it's not identified, but we, looking at it, we've got 68,000 in there that was, actually came in. I haven't gone through it line by line to see what it was, but...
Is that something that, moving forward, that could be easily identified in a natural line item?
Yeah, it, it should be. If it, if it's, if it's significant, there should be a line item for it going forward. And I can go through and, and see what the big amounts are.
I don't remember exactly. I remember back in December, I looked at that because we had that conversation, and what I do remember that it was a genuinely miscellaneous item that you couldn't classify, it was legitimate. Give me a second, I'll look and see if I can figure it out. I've got my notes here from December, maybe I'll find it.
But if it's a one, one-time thing...
Well, it looks like historically it's been there.
Yeah. And one year is $83?
It means I did find everything that's back here.
Yeah, I just...
60,000? So then I guess the converse of it, of it, if there's miscellaneous income, is there miscellaneous expenses that can...
Yeah, there's miscellaneous expenses. Miscellaneous, either way, you know, I like to identify them, and, you know, typically you should be able to identify, and if there's, you know, small amounts and, and they really don't go into anything, then yeah, usually you want to...
So what should we do with this one? Are you still open, Dave?
Michelle's going to run a report to find out what some of the items were that were in that. So if we want to go back to that one, we can after she returns.
Okay, and then the other things that I'm, just, I guess I'm unclear on, I know, and thank you, because there are some things with the new line items that you put in there, you highlighted those, so thank you for that. So there was one that's really going to stick out to me, is one that's a new budget for this coming year, is a grant, grant writing for $12,000. I'm having a hard time telling. That would be, it doesn't have a number yet.
Second page.
Second page, under 595. And if somebody can give me a good explanation why we need that, I understand...
I'll partially address that, I'm sure somebody on the staff can address it more, but there's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars out there that are available on grants, and what we lack in the village is somebody with the expertise to write grants. In some villages, they have a staffer who does it full-time.
Okay, and, and usually two, and pass two, and I understand that Mr. Wallace was able to do that, and actually, some people sitting on this board have been pretty darn successful in writing grants.
Yeah, well, and, and again, we can question the validity of it, I think it depends on the size grant we are looking at. If we go, for example, for some construction grants, that could be, require engineering, that could require expertise that we may or may not have. One of the things to remember on the budget is we're not going to spend, I mean, they still have to come to us to spend it, but this one actually makes sense to me from the point of view, having some money set aside if we choose to have someone spend time on grants. I certainly agree, in fact, I know for a fact that Ruben has done several grants since he's been here that we have successfully got. So I would agree with you that some of the grants we can do on our own without having to spend money, but if we end up having to have somebody to come in and do some grant writing for us for a particular big grant, then wouldn't make sense to have some money there. Now, that's just my input.
Well, and then the other side of that, because, you know, I always will have one, unless we actually go out and hire someone, we don't know what we're missing. So unless we're willing to say that we're going to hire somebody to go out and look for them, and Ruben has done a pretty darn good job of finding grants of what we need, and knowing for a fact too, there's neighboring villages that have said people that actually have that, I know that we can probably borrow, especially from our friends at the South Suburbanaires and Managers, to help us identify. So I, again, I have a problem with it, and I understand your point too, but for that, that amount, I have a hard time, because I think we can get a lot of that help for free.
Let me just clarify also here that the, this grant writing is not stipulated for personnel, it's actually not for personnel specifically at all. It's actually for potential cost, if we have to send somebody off to a workshop or whatever else, or if we have an engineering firm that has to develop, sometimes for a grant, you actually have to have, I won't say shovel-ready, but, you know, because it gets overused, but you have to have paperwork that's processed and prepared a certain way, and that would be where that line item would go, because it's not based on a active project, but sometimes you, that's where you're allocating funds towards the ability to even submit the grant. And that's, that could be on a scope that we have available here.
And I understand that because I have actually prepared them.
Right. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not being dismissive of that, I'm merely stating that this is not specifically stated as for personnel or anything else, but so that we can correctly, so that we can correctly make sure that things are tracked properly.
So there again, just by that statement alone, I have a hard time with spending $12,000. So that's, you know, that's my two cents worth on that one.
Understood.
Can we go, can we go back and start with page one, maybe go page by page through this? Does that, everybody agree with that, Rusty's?
That's fine. Let's go back to item 389 persons, it looks like, no, Daryl, you want to give it?
I'm sorry?
01, 00389. The one that Michelle was saying, yeah.
Well, the miscellaneous, miscellaneous revenue that came in was for eliminate clean energy, community foundation, it was a grant, in the amount of $7,546. So that was one of the things that came in.
Those still white sign on the revenue?
And then we've got Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus light grant, which was for $18,042. So there were some things in there.
Well, so that's grant revenue that we're...
Yes.
So, so...
Which hasn't a corresponding expense, Rusty Gonzalez.
So, and we got those for free, we didn't hire anybody new?
Yeah, I agree, I certainly agree. We've, we've been able to get some grants just because we fell into them, but it'd be nice to...
No, those were written. Those were written.
All right, still on the same page.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
On, I have to get it straight, which line is in, I can't read these lines very well. Clerical assistants, 429, $10,000 increase.
There are two employees, one union, one non-union employee, and in there, I, one of the employees is giving a contractual or union permitted raise there, and the other, I put in the same amount for cousin.
But that's 68,000 for this year's budget, we're going to spend 10,000 more this year, we're projecting another 10,000 next year. That's more than a two and a half percent increase.
To clarify, there was, there was only one person in there, or...
Initially, there was only one, and now you have the second, so I believe that's your assistant administrator also that falls into that. So that's where that person wasn't even hired until partway through the...
I thought when we hired the assistant administrator, we moved somebody else else out to compensate for that.
But they were both non-employees that were there previously.
So what's the non-union?
Yeah, I was going to say that might be under police now, though?
It is.
That one, yes.
What's the extra here for missing something? There's $20,000 here, more than what we had budgeted this year for next year.
I, I believe that there was a person in there that was particularly half the year, if I'm not mistaken, this was before my time, so I can't be certain. I believe there, there was almost half a year there for that person, and then we moved in someone at a higher rate that, that came in, and that's going to continue throughout the fiscal year 15.
And there may have been some overlap in there as well?
Correct, there was, yeah.
Because of the cross-training?
I'm missing something somewhere. Is this an extra body?
No, and actually, in all practicality, here's, here's one of the things, let me just clarify this here. One of the things we're dealing with here, Daryl, I've addressed, is the chart accounts, the line numbers and the descriptions are not necessarily the easiest to, if you look at other villages, like Daryl might have studied some other villages, they do a better job of grouping and defining some of the, the labels that they use. In all practicality, I, I would think that all of our full-time management should be separate, and point being there is, our assistant administrator's not a clerical assistant, so therefore should not actually be under that line item, it should be a separate item.
Correct.
But because we didn't have a previous item to compare it with, because of the way it was constructed previously.
So that's something you can move her into her own line?
I can, yeah.
And that would clarify the misunderstandings on this, I believe.
So the person who's non-union is the administrative assistant?
Assistant, assistant administrator.
The assistant administrative assistant, right.
So there is one more body?
But there is one more body there, and that must be the person who's in there now, that the intention?
There, there are two people in there. There's the assistant administrator, and then there's a...
Finance coordinator.
Finance assistant, yes.
So we're talking about Barb and Michelle, just, so...
Yeah, I just did.
It's okay, I mean, it's, this isn't disciplinary, you can just say...
No, 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 I'm, I'm, okay, then that, of course, leads me to the next one down, which has gone from 7,000... has gone from $7,000 to $45,000.
And that's based on the fact that right now, we have, in a, in an assistant, clerical assistance capacity, we have one part-timer, theoretically, you can have two, you can have three, depends on what the need is, just like in public works, we allow some latitude based on summer or seasonal or whatever the needs are, not full-time, where you're gonna be taking the additional aspect of benefits and all the other things, but just to allow for the potential expenses, not to say you're gonna fulfill that, but just so you have that to work from.
So, and that latitude, I think, is one thing that we can cut then, because I don't think we should be given latitude on that, something like that, if we need to stay within that budget, that's...
Yep, we can definitely drop that. $45,000 a little higher.
For three part-timers at $1,000 each, for less?
I'll say we only get to hire one, then.
I mean, this has a multiple effect, because this is before you figure your FICA and your insurance benefits and everything else that is increased, so we're saying a heck of a headcount here, I would prefer to see a head, an org chart that shows, okay, here's what we had a year ago, here's what we put in now, here's what we wanna have next year, because all we're seeing here is dollars and cents, and this, to me, is almost, from three years ago, a tripling of dollars. Not that we don't need some extra headcount, but this is all hourly, we're not even talking about the salary headcount. Daryl, we want you, so don't worry about that. But, I mean, we're talking about additional hourly headcount as well as salary headcount, most of the increases we're seeing here is all labor, significant increases.
Well, and it's not to say that we'd actually implement this, but if you don't budget for it, you can anticipate that potential as the need arises. Just, and there again, I know everybody's concerned is about planning, and if we fail the plan, and then we get short.
So planning clerical, we can probably plan for, so that's, I think, tripling that amount, I think we need to lower that.
Well, I'm all for planning, I'm a big believer in planning, but planning would be, don't just give me the dollar, show me what we're gonna get for.
Well, this is not mandating any actual hiring, this merely says that there's a potential for this, and thereby, if there's relevance as the need merits, then we can do that, we've already budgeted for it, you know, we've refined the budget to a point where the general fund is actually, we're close, but, you know, we're, what'd you say, $30,000 off, now we're down to $15,000?
Yeah, yeah, with the 40, the 20...
Or $14,000. You know, so, and there again, if you say, you know, fine, budget for a potential second or whatever, and there again, and there's not to define how much you're getting paid or anything else with that, this merely stipulates, and I, you know, this is your budget, this is where you guys set the course for the next year, and you say, you know what, we don't need any more support staff, we don't need anything else, no matter what the village does, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go there, that's your discretion. So I'm not pushing, I'm just making sure you guys are, this is your budget.
Sure, it's our budget, but it was put together by staff, so again, maybe we should be quiet and let the staff tell us what they're gonna do with this money, because you're asking us to approve dollars and cents without any information as to how that dollars and cents is gonna be used, there's no org chart, there's no, here's our plan, here's what we wanna do, you're just asking for bodies, and I don't think...
I'm not, I'm not asking for bodies, I'm asking, what I'm asking for, and my contribution to this is to say, if there's a need, seasonal or otherwise, that we can, we can be afforded the ability to bring somebody in part-time, just like public works or police or whatever else needs to do at times, to make it less burdensome, because if you don't allow yourself to have part-timers, you're gonna penalize yourself by paying overtime, right now, we have, you know, Michelle's doing a fine job, so nothing against Michelle, but we end up paying overtime as compared to having part-time that can actually compensate for some of the hours that she ends up putting in because of Saturdays or late hours or whatever else, because, and historically, we paid too much overtime, you know, even with the previous person that was in the office there that's now moving into another department, and we were paying quite a bit overtime there. So if you don't budget for part-time, you probably are gonna end up paying overtime, which is not in your budget either, or not, and that, to me, is poor planning. So, I mean, and again, it's your call, if you want us to stew on this a little bit, that's fine, you know, we can go on to something else, or you can stay here as long as you want to.
So even by that number, let us stew whatever, but in our discretion, I, just, point of clarification, looking at projecting, this year is $7,647, and now we're asking, you know, the latitude of $45,000, I think that would be a glaring increase to anybody even looking at it, and if we need to plan, and if this is our budget to live within, if we say, okay, the latitude is, let's put it at $15,000 and say, okay, we have a $15,000 clerical assistant budget, we have to live within our means, and if we go over in another line item, then, you know, then it can make up for it.
This is clerical, correct?
Correct. Support staff, that's all.
So 2,000 hours, $15 an hour?
No, no, we're not gonna do 2,000, just, in order to stay under the detention program and to stay under healthcare issues and everything else, they have to be 999 hours or less pre...
And where's that number underneath that, does it say 15?
So let me very carefully ask this question.
15, what?
15,000.
Is this an attempt to keep from unionizing somebody?
No, no, this is standard for Larry, I mean, on this...
Yes, sir, I believe it's not an attempt to de-unionize anybody, it's, all it is is a potential, let's say, expenditure of funds, you don't have to spend the money, but you want a little, for lack of a better word, a little cushion, I believe, if the money's there, then the board's well within their authority to spend the money, if the money's not there, it's a whole different situation, but in most situations, you want a little discretionary income.
In other situations, I'll be honest, I know with police, we have similar issues because of the bargaining agreements and everything else, but if you have a situation whereas you have, let's say, you know, Michelle takes bill, and she's out for three months, you know, for us to replace her with another full-time employee, we couldn't do that, because we'd be interfering with her bargaining, as an example, I'm, Michelle, I'm just using as an example, but for us, for us to actually be able to have a budgeted item there for part-time to compensate for full-timers that may be out for one reason or another, or something like that, we have to have some discretion on that in order to keep from paying overtime to anybody else who's in there, it's just a consideration.
Okay, but then, Larry, I'm gonna ask you this question, if we approve this budget, let's say this is $45,000, does the administration and/or the mayor have the authority to go ahead and do this then without our approval, down the road, or they still have to come and get our approval?
They'll still get every budget, every expenditure, so they'll have them for the board, you just want some, in my opinion, as we would say, some latitude, or if there's gonna be a transfer, the board's gotta approve the transfer of the funds, but you want a little...
Agreed.
Want a little...
A little?
Yes, sir, and for, $45,000, it's probably a good figure.
Well, and there again, stipulating a dollar amount, that we're not even paying a one-part timer right now, it's, you know, there's just, depends on who you're bringing in, what you're doing, there might be demand or whatever for one variation or another, I think we're paying a one-part timer 13 right now, I think, is that sound right?
And if I may, Mayor, is that correct? Because I'm just, I'm sitting here listening to it, because I know that we previously paid a part-time person $18 an hour.
We never did that. Well, I'm not saying we never have, but I know that we're not paying this one.
Okay, that's why I'm clarifying, because again, and I know that, again, being with the previous board of, and exactly the hours of 999 is where it needs to stay at.
Correct.
That person worked for the village for a couple of years at $12 to $13 an hour, so if we're still paying someone at this point $13 an hour, gotta get, you know, Michelle is the picking person, this person, she's here on Saturdays at ball bargain, or normal time, why are we not using this part-time person on Saturdays if we wanna get this budget down?
Or, and a part-timer of some sort, whether it's...
Something, right, instead of your full-time employee going at, you know, and again, we went back to the previous person, too, because I know they flip-flop, you know, anywhere from $15 to $18 an hour, if we get a part-time person on here on Saturdays, that would knock this budget down for four hours. Inside thing, Michelle and I have talked about it, and, you know, and I'm not saying that, you know, whomever is hitting here on Saturday, you know, and again, it's for the water bills, it's for whatever bill, it's four hours, and I know the full-time person would be getting paid basically the overtime for being here for those four or five hours, whatever it might be.
Right.
You know, I'm just, you know, because that's what we're talking about, hours, part-time, overtime, and this is $45,000.
And, and, I'm, sorry, go ahead.
As I see this, this is a maximum dollar amount that we would use, I would submit we could very easily knock, let's say, $10,000, this down to $35,000, and we would still have plenty of room to hire, well, we have one part-timer now, but a second one if we need to, I mean, we do have, like, the Saturday hours, and we have vacation time coming up, I think we just need to make sure we do cover ourselves to run the office effectively. And, you know, most part-timers are working, I don't know, what, how many hours does our part-time work now? Do you wanna know?
Twenty, twenty weeks.
Forty hours a week?
So, looking at the math that I just did then, that would be six people at 20 hours a week, so with that $45,000, so easily, if we wanted to keep our latitude, I think $45,000 is quite generous, so even if we put it at $25,000, I think we'd be well within, and then perhaps that other $20,000 can go into another line item where we need to increase, maybe like roads or something.
So what's your number?
I say 25. I'm throwing 25.
Okay.
I would go 30.
I would go for 30.
Yeah, I just got raised.
You know, I have to say that I'm totally agreement with trustee Holston, and the fact that we push, put this large of a cushion in things, and we've already experienced where an employee or employees have been hired without our knowledge.
And historically...
And with that latitude, and it's absolutely legal, what happened? We had no input in it, and we wanted to have input in it, and that bothers me, to see this large of a cushion in anything in the budget. I mean, I went down to the social security end of it, and if you look at that even, there's an increase there of $55,000. So all those items increase as we get our employees, it's not just one item, and as a trustee, I wanna have control of that as much as I can, I don't feel I do, we put too much of a cushion in there.
Jim, what line item number is that?
457.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Daryl, first question before we get off track, this, FICA, what's the reason for that reduction there? That's a huge...
That's an increase, right?
No, it's 458, and you took it to 158.
480, 480, that's the insurance, the health insurance.
Right, why is it so, it's going down so much?
Well, the police department, union workers, no, they're actually transferring over to a different, to the union insurance, and IPBC, which is the one that we've currently carrying, I believe it is, so if they're leaving, that goes down for the remaining employees.
So it's...
But it's also going up elsewhere.
Right, so it'll be going up elsewhere.
Okay, so that's just going down here, but it's gonna be out?
Correct.
All right, we'll find it.
Correct.
Missed that, thank you.
So decreasing item 430, these are just up here, decreasing item 430 to $30,000, we're now, we're, we actually have a thousand dollars surplus, if you will, in the budget based on the numbers that you've run to this point.
Okay, and just...
I'm just, I'm just kinda mentally tracking this, so...
Good, I'm glad you were then, so we can do this at the end of the night then, too, and just to clarify, too, keep a running tally, the line item right underneath that, too, I'll just clarify, 431, not only do we have the clerical assistance overtime, but there's also a line item for the clerical overtime, so we're worried about Saturday hours, but there is a budgeted line item for clerical overtime as well. There's nothing in there besides, I know it was budgeted in 14, but there's nothing, kind of what we spent already?
Correct, and that, that is the structure of the charter accounts, we need to kind of fix that, whereas overtime goes where overtime should be, instead of all being up into clerical or whatever it may be in that particular place, case, overtime is being added into the, to that one line item.
You're breaking it out from where it was previous.
Right.
So like in the police salaries where they have overtime, they get the regular salary in one, and then it's overtime showed as...
Right, for some reason, it wasn't done here, and we will fix that going forward.
Anybody else on this page? Only page we got here.
Well, the last item on page one, so I'm just on page one, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Nothing to be sorry about.
New line, new line item, $20,000 for a newsletter. So there again, I know it's a new line item, so I'm not asking for you to clarify, but is that something that's in the plans that we don't know about?
That, that could have been my mistake, when it was given to me, I put in newsletter, and I believe it should have been communications, I put in newsletter, I don't know...
What were you talking about, what line?
The very last one.
Newsletter line.
The bottom line is highlighted.
Oh, I have two different options here. What I printed off is, okay, okay.
Underneath forms and printing.
So you're changing that, Daryl?
Communications, yes.
And what does communications entail?
That's something that I actually talked to Daryl about, that with the board's, you know, consent and everything else on this, you know, that's part of bringing all this up, and the budget, and part of the planning and everything else here, has to do with doing a better job of communicating, we all are fans of transparency and communicating and all that sort of thing, but we do a terrible job of getting the word out to the people of what's actually going on, when you look at assistant administrator, Ray has done a fair amount of research in looking at other communities, and most other communities have some form of a communication medium that they use quarterly or whatever else, and assessing what most of them do, some of them just, they do like, sometimes they'll do like a quarterly, it'll cost them $6,000 per quarter, postage, printing, content, you know, all that kind of stuff, that they have to deal with all that, some of them just put it as part of their thing, so it'd be a $24,000 budget for that, it could be that much if you were to do that, it could be less, but it could also be offset, and the goal would be for that to be offset by revenue from ads or something else in that sort, to help promote the local businesses, which ultimately, if you're gonna do that, it's a win-win, more you promote your local businesses, you generate more of the sales tax and things of that sort, so that's, that's an idea, it's not been implemented, there are no physical, like, here's a mock-up or anything like that, this is just thrown on there to see if the board is interested in considering that type of a form of communication.
Well, and I understand, you know, that's kind of what I've been hoping on for a year, although putting it in $20,000, I'd like to see before it's $20,000, because I do know, especially with the new website and capability of everybody's phone for free, and that lovely thing called Facebook, we can do a lot of, awful lot of great communication for free, too, so we do have to do a better job at communicating, but using things at our disposal without that much expense, I think is possible, even if we did literally a quarterly newsletter and do an email blast, you know, the folks on the sign from out front can sign up from our website. Even if we did literally a quarterly newsletter and do an email blast, you know, the, the folks on the sign from out front can sign up from our website. You want a quarterly news blast and they can, we can literally build a free email list inside of our own website and utilize that without any expense to us whatsoever. So that's just one little thing, again, an idea, but I do love the idea of communication, so I think it's a broad thing on there.
And there again, when Assistant Administrator Ray had done research with other towns and found out some of them were spending twenty-four thousand, I thought that was high too and I thought we can go for less. Whether, you know, whatever the contribution may be from, you know, the staff or whatever else, but, so.
I, I think twenty thousand is certainly above budget, so that's fine. I'm going to go back to the original person who came up very first tonight during the public comment. If we can afford twenty thousand for communication, but only two thousand for TV, we ought to think about that. Another discussion for another day.
I'm sorry.
But I think the seniors in our community in particular watch WPL, they depend upon that, they're not on Facebook. And supporting that medium which is already successful is extremely important. So if we allow this, please keep in mind that I may come back after a portion of this somewhere down the road for that particular endeavor.
Okay. Anybody else on page one? And just to clarify on the WPL expense, I, I, I'm not disputing the merit or validity of, of that.
I understand.
But we do have it formally because of the IGA that's in place, that we have to go by, for us to pay more than the other two towns not pay more. It, it's just the way it's structured, I wasn't a big fan of the IGA that was put out, frankly, I thought the township should have been part of that as well.
Well, Sid's, Sid's here, and I'll work with you, Sid, I'll help you.
The other thing is, is that's not the, if I, just to delve into this just for a second. AT&T also is offering U-verse services in our area, and we don't have any means by which to have that collaboration that we currently have with the Comcast services. So I would definitely think that if WPL was also able to help us with facilitating our channel fulfillment to the AT&T circuits, there's even more of a merit.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, but, but there again, that's not even a discussion that Sid's had a chance even, that I don't, I don't believe he had a chance even to discuss it with the other towns or the rooms, so.
And if I may, just, just because it's bugging me here, with the WPL and, because we're throwing a couple things out. It was an agreement again between three or four towns, we all agreed to pay the same amount, and the word transparency is getting thrown around here. You look at our website, when village people go there and see the packet, they don't get the breakdown of what we're talking about, they get one or two pages. Transparency is transparency, they want to see everything.
What do you, I'm, I'm, I'm confused here.
Here's what I'm saying is, what, you know, division of levees, water department budget, they want to see what we see, these sheets. Transparency means we want to see everything, we don't just want to see a title, we want to see the breakdown on the website, and that's the whole part about the website. There's just, you know.
And there again, keep in mind, nothing is getting voted on pertaining.
No, 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 I'm just saying that we're getting off track. You know, we're throwing words, we're starting to throw things around that really aren't pertaining to what's going on tonight. What we want to do is we want to stick to the agenda, we don't need to, and again, like trustee Holston said, for another time, this all come up another time. But let's please try to stay on this, because if, you know, as trustee, trustee Holston asked, we're going to go through all this. Let's, let's go through this and try not to get offbeat here, okay?
Page two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five eighty-three. So this one, I noticed the previous budget amount and what our projections are for this year, and I know Les is heart, Larry's spending an awful lot of time in Moni. So I think that number for the budget, I know it was there on there last year, but given the fact that he is spending an awful lot of time with us, I think that item needs to be increased. So we don't go over that line item next year.
Is that for him or is that for other legal services?
I wish it was for me.
I think this has, I think this has something to do with our litigation.
You may, yeah, and I, so.
Do you want to break that down?
Uh, I believe you have labor council involved, myself, you have Kiantarpen Jenkins, and I don't know, you break it down per firm.
Prosecutors listed separately in the page.
Dave Power from Crane, so you have, you have Mr. Cameron, so you roughly have five different firms.
But I believe some of those are categorized under the Department of State Services. I mean, labor would be this one here.
Yeah.
Council would be here.
I, I think we're discussing it that way, but I, I think currently it, they were all going here.
All right, and, and keep in mind that are projected because of money's actually spent on that item. We had two CBA agreements that, that were finalized within the last year.
So you did break it down then for, because they didn't have a, like enough legal budget or the?
They have legal and police budget?
The only legal in the police budget is prosecutor.
What about the adjudicator?
Where's your adjudicator? It's our, the same one that we're discussing. Or is our prosecutor, or is our prosecutor adjudicator?
So that's five eighty, oh, one, two, one, five eighty-three under page four.
So the, the new budget number for fifteen is lower than projected for this year, so do we anticipate a settling down, as it were, of legal activity?
I hope.
Well, I mean, it is lower, so.
But, but keep in mind, we do have, we currently do have some litigations involved with, without being specific, but we do have some litigation out there. But Larry's our general counsel, kind of, reflects the whole situation for us, but other than that, he's, I don't know that Larry's actually, I don't think your bill this year is much different than it was previous years.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm saying, I, I like the mayor indicated, you got your two CBAs completed, you have some litigation, but a couple have been resolved. It's hard to predict the future, you don't see anything pending coming down the pike as far as we know. But that's, can't think of anything else.
So I've got a thousand dollars net surplus, you want me to put that on there?
So.
I can erase your net surplus right now.
I'm, 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 I'm having a fun.
So moving down to line five ninety-five, which I previously discussed, there was a purpose trustee Gray, in my talk in a minute ago. I would like to double that to four thousand, whether we give it or not, whether we're allowed to or not, if we don't have a budget, we can't spend it. I think that's, the WPL, if we work through the other issues with the other villages, that's only two thousand dollars out of our entire budget additional. And I'm sure we'll find a place to save it somewhere else. And I'll spend it, but I think we ought to have it in there.
Well, keep in mind regarding the spending pertaining to the support of that process, and I don't believe it was Daryl, Reuben, maybe you know. Specifically when we've contemplated the possibility of improving our camera capabilities internally or microphones or things of that sort that we even discussed earlier. I don't know that we've put that anywhere specifically either, did.
I, I don't, uh.
No, I don't think there was anything specifically assigned to those things. So, I mean, the folks who are watching this right now, you know, we're adjusting as best we can without overwhelming the, you know, feedback and all that in the room and all that. In all reality, these microphones are intended to be used like this, and.
I agree.
So.
But we're talking about the only public station that carries this particular village's meetings, and we need to be able to support them. That's all, and this is pittance.
So let me pause that for a minute, I want to go back to trustee Gonzalez, leave her standing there holding the lawyer. What is your request pertaining, pertaining to legal, do you think we need to adjust it?
Yeah, I do, because if this is something that it possibly could happen, and thinking long-term and what some of the meetings we've had in the past couple of months. This very well could go over a hundred thousand again with just two things. Even though I know we're almost done with two, there's a couple more that might happen, so I don't think a hundred thousand should do it. So is that fifteen thousand that we took off of the clerical assistance, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, put it right back on there and make it one fifteen. Put it at one fifteen.
I, it's, I hear what you're saying, and what's with the rest of the board feel about this, or finance director, what do you think about this?
I, I, I put it at the one hundred thousand because of, you know, I've been told that, you know, previous year there were union negotiations, things of that nature. So I thought that, you know, maybe this would be an ordinary year and it, you know, but like trustee Gonzalez has said, you, you, you know, you don't know what's coming, I, I don't, so.
So we're saying it's just, it's just very hard to predict.
Well, he, he, he's, he's run higher than if you looked at eleven, twelve, or thirteen, they were all, I'm sorry, twelve was a hundred twenty-four thousand, but eleven was ninety-two, thirteen was ninety-three.
And fourteen is one thirty-five.
So far, projected, if you analyze it over the, you know, our current, which we haven't actually applied, our expenses are related to April yet. Or March perhaps as well, I'm not sure. As a previous trend, you can see that in two thousand and twelve, there's a hundred twenty-four, a hundred twenty-five thousand. There again, this is the budget for the entire, this is per line item to give us some direction for the finance director, for allocation of funds as they are relevant. But this is not to say that, you know, if you go over in one, you go under another, the goal is to run this thing within, well, within budget and ideally not to create a situation where you're upside down at the end. But our goal, personally, I'd like to say is try to run this as a balanced budget. That doesn't mean changing our numbers that they're not accurate, but budgeting accordingly so that our revenue, I'm sorry, our expenses are not greater than our revenue. That's just good practice.
I would agree with trustee Gonzalez, I think a hundred and fifteen probably is, based on the last three years, is probably a safe number.
I agree.
I'd like to ask why five eighty-one engineering is budgeted for only ten thousand? But its history is much higher. When I went through the engineering with superintendent DJ, and we found that most of that engineering actually probably belonged in one of his departments. He thought, but with, with, with some of the information that he gave me, he felt that there probably wouldn't be much need for engineering. I think this engineering is more for, I think there was a, a line done in, in the, in the park over here, which was kind of put into this, which probably should have been a part expense or some other type of expense. So we lowered that amount, that amount and we increased it in another department. Well, what bothers me is that, as I mentioned in previous meetings, that we had some surprises on route because the ground hadn't been removed for many, many years, and I see that happening. We already have an incident on Egyptian Trail. Correct. The job hasn't really even started, and I wonder if we're, we're not cutting ourselves short here, we may run into quite a bit of extra engineering on that project. And I, I think we may have accounted for it in like Public Works or Road and Bridge or something like that, so it's covered.
So where in DJ's budget is it?
It should be the same line number in a different, different fund, which I believe. Zero two.
Oh, two and a half.
Well, I'm sorry, in department sixty-one, oh, one, sixty-one, engineering, which is buildings, you put in a new line item for the fifty thousand. I'm sorry, Daryl, what, where were you at? Uh, page eight, it's small, I, I understand that the page number is really small, but it's department six, sixty-one. And it should be kind of highlighted or?
For the employment inspector, which is five eighty-eight, oh, one, six one, five eighty-eight, you'll see highlighted.
It doesn't really matter, you're coming over here.
Yeah, Anthony, show me. Because I know, discussed well over a year ago that the, the streets in, I'm sorry, what is, what is your community?
Highlands.
Uh, Highlands, true, Highlands. The streets are flat, they drain the wrong way, there's an area there that floods every time it rains.
So I don't think that, that would be under roads and bridge, but not the engineering stuff.
But the engineering would have to be done to correct those roads, that was, that was anticipated to possibly be done when that project starts. And that to me would be an added idea, not that we're going to do it, but it was anticipated, look at that. Because I know the one corner off of, I'm not sure which street, south of Roswell. We also put. Next street that floods really badly.
Wilson.
Yeah, okay, it's Wilson, I'm sorry, I went the wrong way, Wilson, yes. They talked about the possibility to try to correct that problem when, you know, when Egyptian Trail was done, because they'll be cutting into that street, those streets for a certain distance, you know. Try to bring them up to the new highway, it might be, there could be some extra engineering there too. I'm just trying to say that that project is kind of. I, I think that. You've put it in other areas, that's fine, Daryl. Right, right. I'm, I'm trying to put it where I think it's probably going to be used. Yeah, exactly, I, I. Okay. For engineering for the, the general fund and general, general items, you know, I, we, we thought that we could lower it there and then up it in the other areas in which it would probably benefit. For instance, there's engineering in the water department because of, some of the, you know, we've had some water main breaks and things of that nature. So let me compliment you, because I'm very big on, we're as good as our arms, and you're doing your homework with DJ and everyone else, and you've given me the answers I want. Put it in other areas so that it's covered.
I could interject, part of the engineering cost might be a little bit lower, is something that might have been anticipated to help with the grand army, was, would be part of that engineering that we could need in order to Egyptian Trail and other road, in the other projects that we're intending to.
Trustee Gonzalez, did you catch that?
All right, so what line are we on that, we're still on page, going back to page two?
Five ninety-five, that's where they go, that one, you have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I, I'm not asking you to like go with it.
I just would like for us to, since we're doing a budget, we can find two thousand dollars somewhere else to take away.
I, I, I wouldn't mind seeing us talk with, I believe it's Piattone Creek that we made this agreement with.
Beecher.
Uh, Beecher, I'm sorry, okay, I wasn't sure. And, and find out why we came up with the number we did, and try to stay in that agreement if possible, if we think it's worthwhile. It may very well be justified, you know, but I, I don't know, maybe Mrs. McGrath can answer me. Do you get advertising on that station, will you get some revenue from that?
We're not allowed to do any advertising at all or to put programs on the air, which would be, which would be considered advertising.
You don't get any money from advertising.
Again, I, virtually every week I have people come up to me and say, you know, make comments to me about things that they have. comments to me about things that they have watched on WPL relative to the meeting. So we are, particularly the senior citizens are watching it every week, and I think it's important to support that station.
If I may, I think you need to read the agreement between WPL and WPL before you read...
That's what I'm saying.
All I'm doing Sid is putting it in the budget, it'll be up to you to do that as late as I'm, right?
If we take any comments from the board, I'd like to point out...
We can't, this is, this is closed. He's part of the village. But, I mean, I apologize, but all I'm saying is let's put it in the budget and then we can discuss it offline as to what, what happens. And if it's not in agreement, it's not in agreement, but, but I think it's worth putting it in the budget.
Here's, here's, they are asking for three. I don't, I don't know the relevance of putting it more than they're asking for, especially with it specifically stipulating contractor channel four. Because if we deal with the AT&amp;T U-verse issue and there are provision for that, that's a whole different factor. There may be something we have to contend with on that, but based on that description, it's presuming to be WPL, doesn't say it because it's just, and it's not technically a donation, we're merely providing, they are a vendor, that's all, that's all they are, you know, they're providing a service to us, it's two thousand dollars a year. Historically, I think it's, getting back to two mayors ago, at least it was two thousand dollars a year when it was being honored, it hasn't always been honored. But historically, I think it's almost always been two thousand dollars a year. So if they're asking for three now, if the board wants to allow for that, if the other communities agree to that, that are part of it, I don't see us paying more than the other communities necessarily. I, I, it's...
We'll just put it in the budget, that's all.
I understand, but right now we're upside down by, I know it's not...
I'm going to help you out.
Fourteen thousand.
So am I.
We're going to help you out.
Okay. All right, so...
I mean, does anybody else, I'm telling trustee speaking on this, what rest do you think?
And I think, like Larry said earlier, that I think because of the way IGAs are written, we very specifically have to watch how it's written, and if the other two towns can agree with it, we're just going to have to redo that agreement. So if they're asking now with WPL and she said Mike has approached them, I would find out what the other two towns are doing. Maybe just, just put it in there as a question mark for tonight and then find out what the answer is before we change.
There are also some recognizable areas that should be recognized, but all of the villages involved in WPL. We'll talk about it.
So I know you're saying four, they've asked for three.
We'll go with three.
Let's stay two.
I would wait until we have our next pass.
Okay, so here's the deal though, when we go to present this two weeks from now, or...
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth. We need to have a budget that is going to be voted on as is, I believe, correct?
Yes, sir. On May fourteenth, the board has the right to vote on it at that point in time, but that's your, that's your budget. You can make modifications, it's supposed to be up for public review within ten days before you pass it, but tonight's a draft, you can change it, but on May fourteenth, that date, that's the budget you're going to...
In our reality, three days from now, we have to post the, for the ten days visibility or whatever, in theory.
Yes, sir, it's supposed to be available for public access. So it should be as much as you can in final form, you know, you can make some modifications, but the hearing has been set for May fourteenth, it's supposed to be available for public inspection May fourth, which is, should be available for public inspection. So it should be...
So when we get done with this meeting, with whatever you're directing the finance director to adjust, he is going to prepare a final preview that'll be publicly available, and he has to have that by Friday basically, in order for it to be, to meet that deadline. So here's, and here again, these are individual line items within the fund itself. If you don't spend money somewhere else, or if you want to take money away from your lawyer in order to pay WPL...
I wouldn't go that far.
But it, it doesn't, doesn't preclude you from, if you have your balanced budget and everything in place, it doesn't preclude you from requesting after the fact, a limitation on the fund somewhere in order to compensate for somewhere else. The goal is to have a budget that you, you're, you can live with and then you can make adjustments internally. So you just want your fund to make...
Okay, I wanted to compromise for three thousand right now, because again, it's just a budget.
So I, I, I just want to make sure, do we have a general consensus on that?
Three thousand.
Heidi, are you okay with that? Bill, that's...
No.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah.
Anthony? Okay, so, and this is all in full, so that it's just, you know, you better warm fuzzies today, or it's okay. So if you could adjust that to three, so currently I believe we're negative fifteen.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, then I guess going back as we're going down the line, that twelve thousand dollar for the grant light, grant writing, we might be able to help out there. I really think that needs to go away for this year. I understand having latitude and being able to plan for the future, but I think that's twelve thousand dollars that doesn't need to be there.
And there again, this is not about personnel, but it is about workshops for some of the, some of the personnel that could benefit the village as a result.
Well, I understand, you know, but that says grant writing, not say workshops or anything.
No, but that's, that would be, would be allocated towards if that were the...
Not intended to be labor at all.
No.
This, this is not a labor account, this, this would be...
All right, your feedback on all of it, Ward?
Again, I would think you want some latitude in there just in case, and if the board wants to spend and take another line, having it in the future, you can do that. You just don't want to go over budget because then you start the process again.
You know, the other grants that we have gotten, we, like the lighting one, I don't know if we have paid anyone.
No, DJ voted.
He did, he did write it. My point, my point is, was up till this point, we've, we've gotten all our, not all our grant writing in-house and from existing staff, and I see how hard these guys work. You know, it's there, we may need that. We're a growing community, it's nice to have that option to use some funds, have some funds available to do, to do grant writing. So I would, I would say, my, my opinion is that it should stay in.
Well, and as, as DJ mentioned, or not DJ, excuse me, as Ruben mentioned, this is one that was already in engineering, they just took it out of engineering and put it specifically into grant writing. And yeah, we write some small grants, but there are villages out there writing hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants, and we don't have anybody capable of doing that in the village.
And when, and when some of these grants were eighty, twenty? I mean, it's...
I mean, when we get into economic development, when we get into roads, when we get into some of the things that we're trying to do as a village, we need to be able to write big time grants, we need to have expertise for that, and certainly supporting the staff locally rather than hiring somebody else to do it, I think is the way to go. I don't think we're in a position to hire too many more full-time people out.
There are some grants you can't write in two or three hours, it take, they're very labor intensive.
So general consensus here, do you want to leave it in?
I prefer to leave it in, it would be better.
I guess you thought...
I'd like to go right in the middle and just cut it half. There's some money to work with.
I, I would like to leave it as is.
Trustee Gonzalez?
I don't think we need to, you know, I would agree with Jim if we could cut it in half.
Trustee Gray?
Stepped off for five seconds, but...
Did you say three?
Half, yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, we want to move forward and get some grants, so, I mean, at this point, yeah, let's knock that number down a little bit, would be my suggestion.
Could I ask Ruben, what, do you know what the cost of sending someone to that is to a course? I believe there's a one-week course up north.
There's a three-day course, I saw it trading for, I believe it's, I want to say seven fifty, or it's a one for four fifty, a two-day course. Also the two that I remember, I think there's one, another one in Chicago that is a four-day course, and that I think is around a thousand.
So six thousand.
You know, here's the deal, it's a good start, and we haven't allocated before, it may hurt us on our engineering costs for other development for grants and all that, but this time...
In fact, I found, one of the main things, or besides writing a grant, is we're a little poor, and knowing where to look, who to talk to, making the context, especially in these classes, is key. There's, there is a lot out there and some that we're eligible for that we don't know about. And so you've got to be educated, not lose power, and you've got to get out there. And to do that, you have to have a full-time position as well, trying to write grants and do your job, it's, it's a difficult thing, so defer to someone who's knowledgeable and can help us and assist us, and we're potentially losing hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, we know what we get, but we don't, but we have no idea what we don't get.
This could pay for itself many times over if we got the right grant.
So I think we're about half and half on that.
I'll go with six right now too. Good time to compromise.
Okay.
If we need more, we'll come in and ask for where we can take out of the budget somewhere else.
All right, so we're going to knock that down to six.
If we could go to line nine thirty.
Well, we skipped six fifty-two, Doug. We don't want to skip six fifty-two.
Wait, hang in here.
No, thank you, I would like to talk about six fifty-two.
Thanks for the footnote.
You're welcome, trustee Gonzalez.
All right, so where are we at?
Six fifty-two.
Nine thirty. Okay, why thirty grand?
Was that computer or was that technology in general?
It says computer.
Daryl, could you, I don't want you to take one for the team here, where'd you get that from?
No, I, I want to say, I want to clarify, Daryl, I know we had talked about technology expenses, is this the entirety of the technology, equipment, et cetera, or was this computers only that you had...
This was technology.
So the label says computer, but it's actually general technology, kind of this one. Currently, we have a file server, is one thing, that is undersized and is in need of replacement or in addition, just rough number there, you're looking at somewhere ten, twelve thousand dollars perhaps for, for a new file server. You're also dealing with the need for having replacement workstations for some of the users that are, some of them are rather old, the workstations themselves, and then with other technology, we might be able to implement.
Does this include laptops for the trustees?
He skipped that one.
I had no plans for that, but if that's what you guys want, then...
Hell.
Jim, you seem to have a really good iPhone, right?
Classes of the trustee.
All right.
Okay, so is server replacement in the user workstations?
Correct. Where are we at? How many workstations do you have replaced?
If I remember right, between November, December, and January, we had almost six thousand dollars of checks and Tiger Direct upgrading some workstations, so...
There were some new computers that we had bought, there is...
And where are those?
There is, the EMA director had one, the... Everybody had new monitors. I know I got one because the mayor's office didn't have one before, it was actually working. And the assistant administrator got one. We had to get the parts out, I think, for the one the clerk is using, was one to be repurposed.
And, well, I'll just say it out loud, this is your recommendation...
It is. Just as a rough estimate, I mean, there again, it's...
So looking, and looking at workstations, and you just upgraded everybody, or several monitors and user workstations, so maybe two other people or three other people by my count might need a workstation and a server replacement, that would be about thirteen thousand dollars, not thirty. And this is your recommendation, who's the IT director that's making this recommendation? Who is serving as our IT director, network administrator?
I don't think we have one.
So that would be...
What's your point? I'm trying to ask.
So I'm just saying that I think, and this is your recommendations, but I really think we should have somebody take a look at what our, our real computer needs are, because that's an awful lot of money.
How much do you want to pay for that?
Well, if we're budgeting line items, if that's going to be included in this, and that's manpower, we should have a...
How much have we paid for computer administrative services since I've been mayor?
I would have to look that up, I don't...
Not a whole lot, okay. And actually, some of the things that were like Comcast got thrown under their computers than they should have been. The practical aspect of it is, is I've been doing most of the computer network services, which is my vocation and my training, my expertise, I've been doing most of that to save the village a lot of money, okay? And if you'd rather pay an outside contractor to do it, I'm fine with that, but you're spending more money. I'd rather take care of our staff by giving them better equipment so they can utilize it and be happier about the workplace.
And I think if we're talking about expertise and experience and things, just, that being said, this is one thing I really think that we should entertain an outside contractor to look at. So there's, everything is taken care of, you know, forty hours a week. I think if that's an expense that we need, that's one that we should invest in because that's the cost of doing business now.
So forty hours a week, you want somebody in here taking care of your computer services?
I don't think we need forty hours a week.
Well, that's what you just said. You said forty hours a week.
I said that we need somebody taking care of them forty hours a week, I didn't say we need to hire somebody forty hours a week. The IT company that I know that we've employed in the past, you know, they did like an on-call basis, you know, when maintenance needed to be done.
Sure.
So if that's going to be included in this thirty thousand...
Well, I don't think it'd be close.
How much money did we spend last year before, before you were mayor, sir?
When I talked to Daryl about it, it was actually kind of, the way they had thrown certain things into different line items, it wasn't really easy to dissect entirely. Daryl, do you have that there?
Well...
Because they had things that were thrown under computer services, if you will.
Other professional services, it was kind of, you know...
Ballpark. It was the ballpark.
This is probably going back to two thousand twelve, thirteen. Maybe forty-five, fifty thousand, and that's ballpark.
So if we're looking at it professional services, then, you know, it looks like in thirteen, we spent sixty-four thousand, in fourteen, thirty-six, and budgeted in fourteen was seventy thousand, and projected at forty thousand, and you have it at thirty thousand this year. And that's under line item five eighty-four, if that's where the technology...
Yeah, I believe it was a combination of, some things were being called professional services and some were computer services, for instance. I know that for, for now Comcast is being put under, I believe it's computer services, so they're, you know, it's a, it's a category type thing, where you're going to allocate the expense to. So I couldn't really compare apples and apples, it was kind of apples and oranges. So I thought it'd be better though to, to have a separate line item so that you can clearly see what, what computer expenses or technology may be. what computer expenses or technology may be.
Can we, can I ask, have we upgraded everyone to Windows seven, or we're out of XP?
We don't have anybody actively using XP, except for the SCADA system, which is a whole separate issue, it's part of the water department, and that's because the software and everything that runs on that, very old machine. It's, it's a situation in itself, and DJ doesn't want to touch that until we actually address possibly replacing the SCADA system with newer technology in general.
Does this computer expenses number, is that for all the buildings, or is it just for?
That would be Village Hall and Public Works. The police department has its own allocation for computer-related expenses, I believe, currently. Currently, you have the superintendent, the water person, as well as the mechanic. And there has been, back there even, they have a situation where they have a part-time support staff that's been working in there, which means that somebody else can't use a computer while she's there. So, so in theory, you definitely, you have a consideration for one right there, just because you don't even have one for it, and.
Would this include, do we have any plans to do Wi-Fi or anything like that in our?
That would be all within that consideration there, for extending our technology throughout the municipal campus. There's also some consideration pertaining to our phone service, that, again, there are... The call one contract that we have is about to expire, and the process with that is that, based on that about to expire, it's a good opportunity to consider looking at other options. And I believe the staff has looked into newer technology. One of the vendors that's actually come to the village and suggested a voice-over IP solution, would do so where there'd be no upfront cost for the handsets, based on, based on the contract. There may be some costs associated with the initial interconnectivity that might be required. Keep in mind, we do have a fiber network coming to our building now, it's not been deployed yet, but we have that available to us as well. And ideally, we would have a municipal network that would allow for the police department and the Village Hall, Public Works, all to be connected via fiber, because we have that potential very shortly on the horizon. Would also allow for interconnectivity between any of the other buildings, like the DPW-2, perhaps the park building, things of that sort. So, a lot of that has to do with making sure you have the means by which, to deal with it.
I'm comfortable keeping it at thirty.
Let me just interject something here, I got a message that they need a chip for the camera, I don't have one. Okay, so you get what you get, I'm sorry. Sorry, proceed, I'm sorry, Doug.
I'm, I'm fine, I'm comfortable keeping it at thirty.
I have one question, because I'm not a computer person, and between Trustee Gonzalez and the mayor's conversation, your expertise, expertise background, if we brought a company in to do the computer expenses, ballpark, what would that cost?
They're going to charge hundred, hundred and fifty, somewhere in that range, per hour.
Per hour, okay.
Okay, roughly. And typically, they have a minimum per onsite, say a two-hour minimum onsite. And if they're going to be out here handling the service calls of one thing or another, periodic maintenance issues, they're going to be out here, on average, I'm going to guess, probably ten hours a week, maybe five, five to ten hours a week, somewhere.
So, time would be the max?
On average, but there again.
Again.
But if you're building a new server, typically with a new server comes a lot of extra time, because you're also equipping, transferring files, reconfiguring security settings, and things of that, of that sort. So, if you're going to go that route, you're also looking at typically a deployment of a new server, with the connectivity with the workstations, and there again, I'm just rough.
Yeah, I'm asking, yeah.
I'm not trying to give away my trade secrets. But you're looking at anywhere from forty to eighty hours to do a, to do a new deployment. Plus, you're talking about anywhere from, so if you do, let's just say, if you hypothetically say that's eighty hours, okay, upfront end, or something like that, if you're going to do that. And you're also looking at fifty weeks at ten hours. Yeah, another five hundred hours. So you're somewhere in the range of... Five eighty, six hundred would probably be the max you'd expect to see, you know, which is high. If you're doing something less than that, you might be doing three hundred, might be a.
Yeah, again, not being, you know.
Right, so if you're looking at three hundred, if it's three hundred times a hundred dollars.
Okay.
Somewhere around that, just came up to thirty thousand dollars. So, but that's just, that's a knee-jerk, and that's, that's for computer services. That has nothing to do with the equipment.
So this is just for hardware?
Yes, sir.
But we don't know what hardware we need yet?
Well, I can tell you right now, you're in need of a new server.
No, no, there's nothing, we've got a budget, but we don't have anything as a part of the budget package that says, here's where we plan on spending that thirty thousand dollars.
Not specifically, it's just, and I know it's labeled computer, and there again, it's communication between Daryl and myself, but that was intended to be technology equipment expense, which, that's a, what we have in there for those thirty. So, technology equipment expense, not services, but just, you know, materials, you're looking at... Thirty thousand dollars for that, and that's just an estimate, you know. But if you guys would rather outsource it, that's fine. I'd rather get paid than you would.
I'll be, try to be very careful what I say here.
It's fine.
I'm pretty good at what I do in my job, too. And I could probably come in here and be the administrator for you and save you some money. What's the difference?
Difference is, as the chief executive of the company, the village, if you will, I take it very personally how much money we spend, and how much I can personally save because of my personal expertise. And not being a legislated part of the village, but being on the executive side of the village, implementation side of it, I'm going to utilize that at my best discretion as much as I can. But even when it comes to putting together other things, like our economic development, retail stuff that I've been trying to gather, trust me, I'd love to have somebody else do it. But I haven't been afforded a budget for that. So, if I'm not afforded a budget for it, I guess who ends up getting, getting to do it, if we want it done?
Correct, well, I guess what I'm saying there is, is I'd rather see our mayor doing those other things. And I'd rather see us working toward, you know, if we need outside services who have the time, Mr. Mayor, you have the ability, no question about that, sir. Respect that ability, as a matter of fact. But I'd rather see somebody else working on the webpage and computers and doing all those things, and let our mayor work on the things that he needs to be working on, which is economic development and other things that are big picture visionary type things, which is why you were elected, sir.
I agree.
You weren't elected to be computer. Okay.
But I also realize that we have a limited budget, and I'm doing the best that I can with what we have.
Absolutely, and we found money in the budget the last few years for computers, so we need to do that now.
Well, and this, and by Daryl's statement, if it's been kind of budgeted under professional services, there is a line item, it's under professional budget, you know, even this year, there was seventy thousand in there, and only forty thousand projected to spend, so.
Well, that's partly because of.
No, you've done it, I understand that, no question, but.
So if you're asking, you know.
We're going to continue to push you to do other things along the, hopefully, the area of economic development, specifically, but other areas.
Well, but there again, then you're going to have to inflate that item. If one of those items under five eighty-four, five eighty-five, it's going to have to be bumped by approximately thirty thousand dollars. This is a rough estimate for contract services to deal with. If that's what you guys want to do. I'm trying to spend money we don't have to.
I will.
And I'm willing to do my part.
And perhaps, maybe we can ask for just like a roundhouse bid on, for some of these other contracted services, maybe we can get it done within a week or so, so we can have.
Well, we have it done in two weeks. So if you're, if you're wanting to increase, so I am.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On item five eighty-five, or five eighty-four, whatever the case may be, somewhere in that general area there, you're going to have to budget for another thirty thousand dollars.
Well, we have computer services in at twenty thousand, and other professional services in at thirty thousand, so.
Correct, yeah, and as the finance director had indicated, in years past, they've thrown things into various lineup, chart of accounts, item numbers, that have not necessarily been consistent with what they really are. Like Comcast is not a professional service, nor a computer service, you know.
So where did you put Comcast in for this year, Daryl?
I believe we put Comcast in.
Did you leave it under five eighty-five? Computer services.
Because that's actually like a building.
Yeah, I believe I did leave it on the computer services, yeah, I hadn't, we probably need to create another line item for that, and I didn't create it.
Mr. Mayor, if you want to set up a server and all that stuff, and set up new computers, and save us money out of a non-existent IT budget, I'm fine with that. I wouldn't want to do it, personally.
And frankly, and that's, you know, just by your own statement, though, Jay, that you've said that you would rather get paid for what you do, and.
I agree.
I agree with you.
Right.
So.
And, 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 and trust me, I know that it's difficult being the, wearing multiple hats, I get it. But there again, I'm used to running a small business where I'm, I'm Ray Rayner, head of May, who's only had the two hats, you know. So, I think that if you want to budget for it, that's your, that's your discretion, and in all reality, in all fairness, probably do need to budget for it, just to be fair to the potential of whatever needs to be done. But that means you're going to have to add another thirty thousand dollars in there. Say, on five eighty-five, but that's still not going to diminish five or six fifty-two, which is the technology equipment, that's still going to be roughly thirty thousand dollars in that category.
Well, if you're, the computer expense, if you're going, if you're lumping it into technology.
Right.
Or, I don't think that either line item depends on how it's budgeted then, or what the bill's under. Because the way I'm looking at it now, thirty thousand dollars included in the technology, plus computer services, plus professional services, that's ninety thousand dollars.
And I'm not sure what actually was included in the previous years for professional services, I'm not pulling the details on that. But a lot of things get thrown under professional services. Engineering at times is thrown under there, legals get thrown under there, it shouldn't, it should be under legal, should be under engineering, whatever else, but.
So, and, and, yes, and it happened in the past, and, but the budget line items now, he's cleaning up, so this is in.
But there again, but there again, he's still trying to review, as he's inherited some of the stuff, so.
So the question I would have is, is how important is it that we pass a budget in two weeks? Is the world going to end?
If I may, sir, the budget's supposed to be passed by the first quarter of the end of the fiscal, of the first fiscal year, so you're talking mid to late July? You have, the fiscal year ended today.
Right.
So you've got the first quarter of next year, of this fiscal year.
Right.
So, you do have some time.
So the question would be, do we, do we want to have more information, or do we want to be, feel like we're rushed to pass a budget tonight, number one? Number two, I don't think at this point, on this subject, we're talking about taking the numbers off. There's a separate discussion that needs to be held about how involved the mayor is in computers versus other areas. That can be, have a different time, this is a budget meeting.
So that's, yeah.
I'm okay with the thirty thousand, because I do think that's probably a drop in the bucket for what we need, but that would probably be a good start. What I'd like to see from staff, we do have staff here, is a plan that says, here's how we plan on using that money. And come back to us, and I would personally prefer for them to say how we would spend that money without the mayor doing the work, and if the mayor chooses to do the work, that's his business, I suppose. But we have dates, timetables to meet, we didn't do very good on the webpage, hopefully we'll do better on this. We have a lot of things to do in the business of Monique, so that we get away from being small town to big town. And computers are certainly a big part of that, and we do need to have a good program, and no question about that. We're not, no one here is even arguing about that, we're all agreeing that we need a good program. We need to have better computers, we need to have better implementation. What I'd like to see is a plan, whether you choose to be a part of that, and want to put the hours down that you think it'll take, it'll be your decision, sir. But I think we need to, number one, it's, if we don't finish tonight, I don't personally care. I'm not going to vote for something that I think either won't work, or I don't have all the information, and it's very obvious in this subject, we don't have all the information. And yet, it's a very important area, it is a very important area. And I'd direct it back to staff to give us a better idea of what they plan on doing with that money. Do I have a consensus on that, from the trustees?
I agree.
Yep, I agree. Yes, I mean, we, you know, when the mayor took over, we abolished the committees, and this is stuff that in the past, we would sit down and talk about, and just like Trustee Halsted said, if we go page by page, we all have to work in the morning, we could still be sitting here. If, if we have a plan, like the attorney just said, I understand the importance of we want to get it done by this weekend, but if it doesn't necessarily have to be done, we should consider, okay, you know what, here we go, we're going to be there for, for a long night, in the next three to five weeks. No pressure on you, Daryl. Have at it. You know, let's sit down and be sure we know what we're talking about, not just getting put under the gun and going, hey, this needs to be decided tonight.
And it's not being decided tonight.
Well, I understand, I understand, but I also understand what Trustee Halsted's saying is, you know, there's a lot of numbers being thrown around, and some of us aren't big number guys. You know, just like I asked the mayor about the computer, I have computers like myself and Trustee Bob. I'm right with him as far as the computers, and what does it cost to get the whole thing going? So, I mean, you know, Mr. Halsted is, is up on, you know, the economics, and Trustee Heidi is up on the computers. So, I mean, if we want to, I don't, exactly, excuse me, one second, guys, and lady. I don't exactly know where Trustee Halsted was going with this, do we want to move forward with the rest of the meeting and come back to this at a later date, or?
I think this subject will.
Let's keep going.
I guess.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry, so I guess what we need to know, what I'm hearing is, what does professional service, other professional services mean, and what does computer services mean? That's, that's, you know, because you were saying that a lot of stuff was lumped into the professional services over the years, and maybe we need to break that out a little bit more.
Yeah, I think we will break it out going forward, but in the past, legal, professional services as far as computer, computer services have been going in there.
Phone repairs.
Phone repairs, copier repairs. Phone repairs, copier repairs, I think just, just a, you know.
A whole mishmash.
Yeah.
So that thirty thousand is actually a reduction, quite a bit of a reduction from this year, because we are trying to break it out.
Well, trustee Gray, to answer your question, sir, where I'm going is, I'd like to direct staff to come back when they're ready, tell us when. With a, this, by the way, Darryl's great, I do appreciate this, lots of good information to start with, but this is just barely a starting point. I'd like to see in the packet some inclusive information where you're asking for more than a two and a half percent increase, why? What's the plan? Doesn't have to be detailed plan, but at least an outline of saying, okay, thirty thousand dollars includes a server, this, this, and this. We have increases for the police department, what does that include? What's, what's the purpose? Or we can sit here and go line item by line item over the next two or three meetings, because each meeting will be probably four hours long.
If, if I can jump in, that, that was the intention that I had, was to kind of put something out there to start a discussion. And also, hoping that we can kind of go back and forth, you know, you'd have a question, I'd answer it, or whoever it may be, I'd get the answer for you. And then, you know, all the questions will be out there, and then we can come, come together as a whole and then, you know.
I, I don't think we can get through all the questions tonight, but you probably have a flavor for where we're going.
Well, here, let me just say this, whether we get through it and reach any kind of a consensus on momentum on where you want to go with this, you need to make sure that you guys are taking ownership of this, it's your budget. And if you're not having the opportunity as a group now to ask the questions that you're looking, looking for any kind of response on, we could have a month, a week, a month, two months from now, it's not going to matter if you're, we haven't gone through and asked these questions and told staff exactly what you're expecting of them to respond with. So whether we have something ready for the published meeting on the fourteenth or not, I agree, it's optional. Preferred, yes, but if we don't, I mean, if we can come to a consensus tonight on our budget, that'd be, that'd be wonderful. But I, I, I agree with trustee Alston that if we can, we can, you know, it's more important to get it right than it is to, than to rush through it, but we still have to get through it regardless. So whether this takes, you know, five minutes or five hours, the reality is that this part has to be gone through. There's other items on the agenda that can be bypassed, but the other one, just so you know, is going to have to be addressed to, you know, sooner than later, has to do with the water issues, and, you know, that has to be addressed. And because it's also part of our budgetary expectation, we are taking a loss on our water department, we have been taking a loss. Further reviews, the twenty-one years since.
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three, since the rates have actually changed, we thought it was less than that, we were looking further, actually there's little or no difference in the follow-up ordinances. So, and, and we're taking a loss, and if you look at, if you jump ahead, I don't want to get too far ahead, but if you jump ahead to the water department, you're going to see that we're at a one point, Darryl was a one point two million dollar budgeted deficit for that fund. It's a separate fund, so you have to deal with it on its own. And that has to do with water, that has to do with sanitary, and it has to do with, and you guys need to take ownership of how you want to proceed with this, because I'm not in favor of passing a budget where we deliberately are dipping into the reserves and the people that are consuming the utilities or water, whatever the case may be, are not necessarily paying the appropriate amount to run that department correctly. And you could say, well, maybe we're not running lean now, well, I think we are. Especially if you consider if you're running against, say, Aqua or another vendor that's providing, say, Green Garden, some of these other areas. You, there's, there's articles in your thing that they just printed out today that have to do with when they came in and took over some of these areas, doubled or tripled some of the people's water rates. So we need to make sure that we're running lean, but effective, and we're taking care of the consumers, and the consumers are taking care of their portion that they are consuming. So. I don't know if you guys are too tired to go on, or should we continue to go on, I think we should go on, but.
I won't suggest we don't go on, Mr. Mayor, the, the point was that I think we've got a good flavor of where we're headed with the general budget and some of the information that will be necessary, and whether we go forward as a committee on the whole, or, you know, it doesn't make sense for us to meet individually with Darryl, he won't have enough time to do that with us individually. But we're going to sit here and ask a lot of questions because we don't have a lot of information. So maybe if staff could come back, I'd like to direct that to, not to Darryl, but to Ruben, who's basically in charge of the staff there, right? And let him support, you know, go back to the group as a whole, come back with some general information, then we can ask a minimum of questions, but still ask pertinent questions. Most of us have only had this a few days, so we are still trying to dissect that. The water bill, I certainly agree with you, that packet was given to us tonight.
Right.
So we haven't had time to go through it.
But some of that, no, I agree, I, I agree.
But what's the staff recommendation? I mean, again, you're telling us to take ownership, I'm happy to take ownership, I have no problem taking ownership, what are you recommending?
I, I'm recommending that the board seriously look at the dysfunction of our current ordinances, our current implementation or practices pertaining to the water department, and come up with an idea, because to put it on staff or to put it on me without you guys looking at it and saying, well, here's, and, and there's plenty of research with other towns we're doing, you know, we are second lowest in the entire region. There's forty-three communities that are in the South suburban mayors and managers association, and we're, creates a lower than us, and there's a, it's, it's interesting when you look at the way they label it, because they, they, they do it per thousand, but they also don't necessarily identify the base rates they throw on for all the other variables, so their per thousand is a little bit lower than ours, but they also hit certain minimums and other things that aren't consistent, so. But there's some towns that are charging, well, Park Forest to the north of us are just a little bit, they're charging like twelve, eleven or twelve dollars per thousand, something like that. So, I mean, the point is, is that's just crazy. You know, I don't, I don't see us going there, but we have to reach that point, which we're saying, we had a hundred twenty-five million gallons that we pumped in water to our consumers last year. Hundred twenty-five million gallons, okay? And we have a roughly one point seven, not quite two million dollar water portion of our water department. There's sanitary that's also in there, divide it up, figure out how that works out, but that means that we're not even coming close. So whether you do it on assessment of a minimum fee per meter, if you do it for, there's all sorts of variables in how you can do it, and there's one of everything in here. But bottom line, we're all going to have to deal with the fact that if there's a water increase, and that's what it's going to come across, then we're all going to hear about it, because no matter if it's just a dollar, or whether it be twenty dollars, or whatever it is that ends up affecting somebody in their water bills, or whatever the case may be, we're all going to hear about it. But there again, I can't, I can't personally be responsible for approving a budget and a consumer usage fees that puts us deeper into our reserves, which means we have to ultimately levy more property taxes and everything else. So I'm a believer, if you use something, you pay for it. So we've got to figure out the correct way to make that happen, and that's, I, I need you guys to take a look at it, and look at all the other options. Staff's researched it, they're continuing to research it, I mean, even today, you know, you know, you talk about, I should have been out dealing with my customers and stuff like that, but I was here all day trying to, to help identify other options for what could we possibly do, dealing with Darryl and Ruben and DJ and all that, trying to look at. It's, there's a lot to take in, and it's not easy decisions, and we're not going to make that decision. We can make recommendations, but bottom line is, it's not going to be a happy decision, I should say. But it's not a happy decision to continually hit the reserves unnecessarily, because there won't be any reserves if you keep that up. And I don't mean you guys, but I'm just saying, you know.
I, I use water here in town too, and everybody here does, so I think we, you're asking for direction, and I mean, I'm speaking only as one member, one trustee, but we want a balanced budget, we all understand that, we can't have a deficit. People may not like a rate increase, but rate increase is inevitable, I'll say that for the camera, a rate increase is inevitable, we're running deficit. Everybody here should know that, nobody should be ashamed of that. For too long, we've ran a deficit, so there. So again, my only question is from a staff point of view, do you have a particular recommendation? Don't have to answer that tonight, but I have no problem passing a rate increase, it's going to happen. What I think we have to agree upon as trustees, to the six trustees, is do we try to balance it in one year? Or do we say, let's take three years to gradually bring it up? But either way, it has to be, it has to be at the minimum a break even, Mr. Pop.
To me, it, we cannot bring it to a point where it's even break even. The cost would be too much for the community, for everybody. It's, it's been lost for too many years, it's been in deficit for too many years. To hit the people with that kind of an increase would be terrible, I'll say it that way, I won't be a part of something like that. I don't even know the number yet, I just know that it would be large, and we have to be very responsible on how we bring it back. I think being responsible trustees and our government is to do it gradually, that's how I'll say it, and I don't know how much, but we're not going to be balanced for a couple of years at least.
Right, right.
That's all I'm saying.
Did we stop?
You know, I, I just.
Why did we slip, skip to line item?
Yeah, no, that, that's why.
No, sorry. He brought it up, so I was.
Yeah.
I did want to address the fact that there is a topic that needs to be addressed tonight especially, even if we don't intend to make it through the budget, we do need to have some discussion on the water, because there's also going to be a public forum, if you will, on the fourteenth. Because if there's going to be a rate increase, in all fairness to the residents, they need to realize what we realize, so they can have a voice in that matter as well, and they hear the reality of where we're at, so. So let's get back to page two if we can.
Uh, nine thirty on page two, moving right along.
Yes, sir.
Uh, economic development, there's nothing allocated for that.
Economic development, this is why I've been going back and forth with, I've, I've, I've put it in a, in a TIF fund for the time being. I've allocated an amount there, there, I left it open for discussion because I wasn't quite sure how we, how we were going to attack that one.
You say it's in the TIF fund right now?
Mm-hmm.
There, there's.
How much?
I believe there's thirty, thirty K.
And then if it's in one of the TIF funds, or is it divided amongst the four, do we have to spend it within those TIF funds? Or does the TIF allow, do we have, or is it?
I did not divide it between the, the TIF funds, I, I believe I put it into, excuse me, TIF two, I believe.
Then do we know if we spend it on economic, does it have to be within that TIF?
It should be within that TIF, I believe, and I'll check with Darryl, I believe back in nineteen ninety-nine, there was also part of a, when we issued bonds, I believe, for rural kitchens, the villages allocated, I think twenty-five thousand dollars in funds are available from that one TIF, but if.
For economic development?
Yes.
Well, actually.
TIF related expenses, but if you're going to use it for that TIF, it should be designated for that TIF, unless they, unless they're adjacent to each other, or most villages like to keep their stuff in the park, in case one of your developers come in and say, what'd you do with that money? So it's best to keep it inside that TIF district.
Yeah, and, and there's going to be other areas pertaining to economic development, let's say if you're dealing with the retail potential on Bonham and Hammond Road, that's not a TIF district at all, so if we're going to allow ourselves the ability to spend money out of the TIF funds, yeah, that's fine to list it under there, but in all practicality, you're going to have to have some that's going to be designated as general economic development funds if you're going to law for that, so if you get thirty under TIF two or TIF three or the, or the solvent.
So can we take the six thousand that we cut from grant writing and put it in economic development there?
I think that from the TIF fund, that thirty thousand should all be moved on here then.
Oh, you love.
For the record, I asked for fifty thousand for that, thirty thousand probably will not get a study done.
And, and I'm, I'm going to check to make, verify that number that I said, the thirty K.
I would love fifty K in there, I wasn't, I was not, I was too timid to ask, but. Which TIF do you see?
Two. I'm, uh, that'd be fund number fifteen. Press fourteen for TIF three. It's, it's either going to be fund fourteen or fifteen, so that'd be towards the bottom of your packet. One of the last pages, like. Doesn't look like it's under there. I don't see it under fifteen.
I know I was going back and forth with that one.
expenses?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not it. I don't, I don't see it there. Now, I think you would put it under TIF four, because that's the one, it's the bonded one.
What if the under TIF, would you put it in?
TIF four.
I don't think I did, I, I thought I had put it in a separate line item, but I don't, I don't see it there. I'll make sure it gets in there, depending on where we agree to put it tonight.
And there is, there is a potential connect between Darryl and Larry, you guys can review this, but I know that there's a potential in some TIF funds to take approximately twenty-five thousand dollars in administrative ma- ma- management, if you will, of the funds. So that could be taken from the TIF fund reserve and used to cover the costs of even our economic development and stuff like that, that's an internal thing.
Yes, sir, the only thing, if I recall correctly, on that, you had five levels of payment, first was rural kitchens, the second was for certain expenses, but I think we're number four, four or five, I think that twenty-five thousand dollars per year.
Yeah, that's enough to know if we're never going to.
I'm not sure the funds are there though, because we have to check, because rural kitchens, that was, I think, nineteen ninety-nine, and there were five payments. One was Whitey Corporation, they're number six, but we'll have to check. Uh, I, I think amalgamated is trustee on that one.
Okay, but it might be applicable to all three funds?
I believe, your honor, that the only time we issued bonds was for rural kitchens, and if I recall.
You know what I'm saying, the, the, the management fees.
I, I would try to get the one.
TIF four?
Yes, sir, only because if another TIF district holder comes in and says, what'd you do with that money? Do you want it allocated towards that one TIF area?
No, I just wasn't sure if there's an administrative, like, the administering of the fund, there's, you can assess a, just like a trust fund type, you know, situation or whatever else, where you can assess a management fee for the fund.
As long as we can verify we use that money for TIF related expenses in that fund, yes.
Okay, so we'll need to clarify what are potentials on all three of those current funds. So, and Larry, I'm going to ask if you don't mind to, to review our legal abilities on that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, are we still on page two?
We're wondering where to put the economic development, if you can put it here or.
But, and, and again, I agree, we need to have economic development, there needs to be some provision for that, and depends on what happens, we might, you put it in here and let's say you put it in here, fifty thousand dollars, and we get a CMAC grant to match that, follow what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Then, then we also would need to put a contingency revenue to match the expense, because you still want to have a balanced budget, so your, the, the goal would be if you're getting a, because with the potential of the airport or different things like that, I know IDOT is identifying the potential of funds to help the communities that are affected with their mapping, planning. So that being the case, there is, would be CMAC, be at IDOT, be at the county, whatever, there would be our partner with all that. And you're talking about, you're calling it economic development, it's actually a comprehensive plan, is actually what I'm referring to right there with that, but I know you talk about.
Economic development plan, I'm not talking about labor at all, when I talk.
I don't understand that, but I'm talking, would you like a comprehensive plan where you're looking at your proper zonings and things of that sort? plan where you're looking at your proper zonings and things of that sort, and your long-range plan which includes a mile and a half outside your current footprint, things of those sort, that's a comprehensive plan, and you can get a grant to help with some of that. But if you're gonna put that in as a potential expense, you also need to anticipate some uh, possible grant support for that, be it a twenty, fifty, fifty, whatever the case may be.
Well, if we're gonna give you six thousand for a grant, you should get the right one. What if you want?
So what, what is your preference as a board as far as for economic development? If we can pull any funds out of TIF specific to that district, that's relevant to that, that's fine.
You could just transfer that in here though anyway, right?
No, you pay it directly out of that fund technically.
How that works?
Well, you, you, yeah, we don't, like, we're minimizing all the transfers that they used to do.
Okay.
There, there used to be journal entries up to, you know, comfortable places. Um, and we're trying to minimize that, so everything is more clear. So if there's funds being allocated to something, a check is actually written for that, uh, which is wait, they used to do it a few years, quite a few years ago, and we're going back to that as the, what the finance director's indicated, so.
But if I understand the village attorney correctly, the amount of money you could spend out of TIF would have to be directed at the economic development in that TIF.
Right. I, I was strongly suggesting-
So we're gonna have to have money in the general fund to handle those things that aren't part of a particular TIF.
Correct, correct.
So I would recommend at least twenty-five thousand, which would be half of what the probably fifty thousand we might need.
Sure.
Uh, be put in here as a, again, starting point. Assuming that the other twenty-five will come out of the TIF somewhere.
I'd be in favor of that.
So you wanna put twenty-five on item number?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty?
Yes, zero one zero nine three zero.
Now.
I've lost track, I'm all upside down.
That, that being the case-
Where, where are we?
That being the ca-
Negative.
That being the case, though, I would also, uh, suggest, as you just mentioned, Mr. Mayor, that, um, with all the new computer systems that we're gonna get and all the grant money that we have, we should be able to write some grants, so maybe we go back to the income portion of this and put some money in the income for, for, uh-
Yeah, and, and when, when Mr. Bowler and I were looking at other communities, what they've done is they've deliberately allocated, let's say like we had PNR grant for part-time help in the summer last year, uh, you'd actually have a labor grant offset to the Parks Department or whatever the case may be, and, and you deliberately budget the expense and the revenue because you're anticipating based on the, the trends or potential of that. Now, we had never added before, so that was something new.
And, and to add to that, I think that they were trying to offset because potentially you don't know if you're gonna get, if that grant is guaranteed, so it's, it's difficult to put that amount in, in the, uh, budget because, you know, if you, if you, if you, say you're gonna get a grant for twenty K and it doesn't come through, then, in the door, you're twenty thousand dollars under, so either you're gonna put it in and then put it offset expense to it to break even, that way, you know, it doesn't take you either way.
So you wouldn't handle that as miscellaneous income, you would just take it offset?
Well, that, in the past, it did as miscellaneous, but we're trying to clean that up.
Right.
So how would you handle this then in the future?
Uh, in the future, I think if, if you're gonna put a line in there for grant revenue, then you're gonna have an offset, which is gonna be a grant expense to that, and then you'd break even on that, that amount. And if you get the grant, then great, because then you're, you're ahead of, of your budget.
And again, this is not the grant writing workshops and house stuff.
Right, right, right. No, 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 I understand.
This is just like if you have, and in what we saw in the one town where they're actually doing, they're having like, they break it down for grant, uh, infrastructure, grant labor, grant whatever else, and then they have a contingency under their labor or under their whatever else, so they're actually putting in an expense, but it's tagged in such a way that you can verify it's a contingency payout.
That'll make the budgeting process easier in the future for it.
Well, especially if it's labeled as some sort of an indicator of some sort that you know that this is grant contingent.
Okay.
So, so are you asking to go back to, just to reference this, are you wanting to also go back to put a grant contingent reference on this twenty-five thousand? Or you're gonna have some of that, you're gonna have to spend grant or not, just to get some self-accomplishment perhaps, but are you wanting to have a potential revenue?
Not at this point.
Okay. All right. Next. Page twelve. Just kidding. It's like, it's what I do with my kids in the room, looking, I know, I'm a little worried about that.
What question's on page two? Page four?
Well, page two, police commission, uh, no expected revenue, but that was a, a budget provided. Uh, and since they're, uh, recently started, I thought these were reasonable expenses.
Is, is there no revenue for testing, uh, contribution? I, 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 we have to replace some-
The, if, I, I have that breakdown in that, is there a potential possibility, but the problem that lies in there, if in fact you have someone apply and they can't afford the, the fee that has been set up, there are ways to, you know, recover that. So to, again, to, you know, those areas that you plug in on the revenue stream and it, you know, can fall short beyond the bar.
Okay, so there is some potential revenue, so there may be need, a, a line item in there for testing, like, whatever the line item might be, but, but we're not, we're not anticipating a particular dollar amount for that? Okay.
So, right now, the applicants are paying the insurance fees, if you will.
Sure. They're paying that to us or were they paying that to the testing company?
Director of the testing station.
So we're, we're not, we're not in that equation. Okay.
Not yet.
Okay.
Were we paying, I mean, I realize the police commission wasn't active in the past, but wasn't that budgeted?
It was, and very little, if anything, was ever spent out of there because-
Right, no, I understand that.
Right.
But it says new line item, that's where I'm confused.
Well-
Commissioners in the past, they, there was an, uh, as far as I knew, I don't believe there was a line item for tho- for them, and then mileage, uh, legal, legal, paralegal and legal mileage, those items weren't included. Uh, I believe the other things were meetings and luncheons, uh, postage, legal services, office supplies, and, and those were just some of the added ones that I highlighted.
And there again, it's kinda tough to budget, I mean, Mr. Drusbeck and Mr. Pearson and, and Ms. Bradley have worked tirelessly to, uh, bring us up to speed quickly, and then, again, hats off to them for their efforts, uh, because we legally couldn't have hired anybody if we had to. Uh, no, we can't.
I'm, I'm just asking questions out of ignorance, I don't wanna get the police department upset with me.
Oh, they're, they're-
Uh, but, but-
That's fine, I'm just saying, so, so-
Do you all eat a lot? Thousand dollars? What's that for?
What's that?
Thousand dollars for lunches?
Where do you see the?
It's meeting.
Meetings or luncheons or whatever? Uh-
There is, there is a seminar that we were hoping to attend, and, and as sessions that you pay tuition to go to these sessions. So it's a learning experience, if you will.
And you get hungry.
And, and they gotta buy donuts, you know, I mean, it's-
It's a place.
Not going there.
Okay, and that's my question, thank you.
Okay, uh, recreate on that one, can we go to page four?
Can I just ask, um, because we do have, are you, Mayor, you said we have to, uh, talk about the water thing tonight too? Can we budget our time, that we decide that, okay, we're gonna transition to water at some point?
I would like to at least get through our general fund, and we have our-
How many pages is that?
It goes through page nine. The general fund goes through page nine. I, I would, I would be, uh- And there again, if we don't finish it tonight, we can schedule another meeting, we can schedule another meeting, we can schedule another meeting, I'm fine with all that, you know, because that's how we communicate. But I don't wanna task, tax our staff unnecessarily by one-on-one meetings when in all reality it would be best served to have them.
But do we have to, we do have to talk about item F tonight, that's inverted?
I believe so, because, and I'll tell you the reason why, here, let me, let me tell you the al- the al- the, the other thing pertaining to that. Now, we're not ready, I, I'll say this, we can touch on it briefly. You've, you've got a lot of reading materials to review, our old, our, our current old, old, old ordinances, you got comparisons with other communities, I'll just jump ahead and number, alter after just for a second here. Um, there's a lot to digest. Suffice to say on that, um, if we don't get that covered tonight, my concern was for the internal office staff, is we have a trash rate increase, it's going to kick in the next billing cycle. I don't want the internal office staff to have to deal with two billing cycles in a row where there's like, what'd you do? Why did my rate go up? Okay? I, I don't wanna have the staff to have to field those types of questions repeatedly, interfering with their productivity because of the compliance and concerns. I'd rather, if we can align our water rate increase, if there be one, and I believe there will be, but I'd rather align that with the next cycle. That way, and we already have it scheduled for a, because we're trying to move this along, we already have scheduled for the fourteenth at, we had scheduled for fourteenth at five-thirty PM for a budget review. If we're not ready for it, we're not ready for it, that's okay. At six PM, we had public, uh, forum, town hall meeting, if you will, pertaining to, uh, the water rate considerations. And that's just to make sure the public has an opportunity, not within the regular confines of a board meeting, just to understand what we're up against. Um, and there again, that's under the advisement of the, uh, interim administrator suggesting that full disclosure to the public, they're gonna be less agitated if they fully understand, you know, this is a real cost, it's relevant, applicable, and this is what we have to do, you know? So the more information, the more, you know, so. Uh, I will say this, i- i- to help you with your assessment when you're reviewing item F, is this, uh, last year, you can, we can review the budget for the water department, which is, uh, oh eight?
Oh eight, yes.
Oh eight, and that includes sanitary water, which is processed by Aqua, but we have additional costs on the sanitary that are not absorbed by Aqua because we own the infrastructure. They don't, so we're paying them for treatment, but we're only passing on the charge for the treatment to the consumers, but they're not paying anything extra for any of the infrastructure maintenance or anything else on the sanitary. Uh, so there's nothing added to that. There's also pertaining to the water, uh, when you isolate and separate out the, basically three aspects of the water department, you got sanitary, you got the water, and you got the capital improvements and the potential for some of those things, you, you kinda, kinda segmented out there, about three areas there, but, uh, Darryl, I believe it was a hundred and twenty-five million gallons that we metered, at homes, at businesses or where else, we had a hundred and twenty-five million gallons roughly that we metered at twenty thirteen for the calendar year. Uh, we metered, if you will, after the de-ducks and whatever else, roughly a hundred and twenty-four million in sanitary. Okay? Because you have a number of people have either de-ducks or they, you know, or the case may be, so. All that being said, if you have a hundred and twenty-four million, a hundred and twenty-five million gallons, gallons in water, and the water portion of the water department fund, oh eight, uh, and the individual items there for the expensive portion of that end up being approximately one point seven to two million dollars in that range for the water portion of our expenses, then you have to divide it up and you figure it out, you, you see where we're at. I mean, that's if you're gonna charge consumers exactly what, you know, our cost is for having that service available. So, just something to think about, that, that's, so if you're not, just so you understand, so you got a hundred and twenty-five million gallons, you have about, about one million gallons less that is sanitary. So that's just rough numbers if you deal with it. If you look at a year's worth of budget, then you're, you gotta figure it out, where's the water department supposed to, to deal with those issues? So, so at the very least, if that's all we cover for the water department tonight, specifically regarding item F, that's okay, but that's what we have to thoroughly dissect and, and there's surveys in here from most of the other municipalities, um, Super Tody Cruzell also got some information from one of the organizations he's a part of that's in here. Um, and you realize that EPA is putting more stringent requirements on all the municipalities for the water supply and service and all that sort of thing. You look at towns like, um, Crestwood with some, some of the issues they had in the past, you know, we have significantly under Super Tody Cruzell's leadership, we have improved the quality, competence that we should have in our water system. And that's because he's taken steps to do things that frankly, uh, should have been done more consistently in the past, and I commend him for his leadership in that area. Uh, the bottom line is, that along with all the new EPA regulations, there's a cost to that. So even though some of our other towns in the area might be at a certain rate today, who's to say that they're not gonna have to reassess where they're at? You know, but the fact that we did twenty-one years without any change, so. You guys wanna get back to page four?
So that, that concludes our discussion now of item F, so we-
Yep, yep, you're good with that, as long as you all understand that. Okay. So are we back to page four?
Page four's the police department, their budget.
So I have just a question on, I had, uh, line four twenty-nine.
Clerical assistants?
Yeah, so now we have clerical assistants there, and I can see the notations on the site, um, the increases are in place, but looking at, was budgeted in fourteen, projected for fifteen, or projected for this year, and now the new budget for fifteen, that's sizable. John?
I think, again, is this another combined where you're showing both management and, uh, support staff?
I, I believe this was actually, uh, and Chief, you could correct me.
Yes, thank you, if, if, I can explain.
Thanks.
This is, uh, moving us from a full-time clerical, a part-time clerical, to two full-time clerical staff, uh, one of those being my executive assistant. So the contract, uh, I'm now from the CDA for one person is absolutely in place, the other person, uh, making my, actually my executive assistant makes substantially less, so I'm looking for, um, five percent increase in salary for, uh, that person. Uh, that comes out to just a little bit under the five thousand dollars altogether. Uh, when we started this process out, uh, for me, I wasn't aware of what the full salary was gonna be, and when I spoke to Darryl after looking at the collective bargaining agreement for the other side of the village, it became readily apparent that there was gonna be a huge disparity in the supervisory, supervisory person. But there's actually two positions in this one line?
Two full-time staff positions in that line.
But for, again, Darryl, if you don't mind isolating this out there because his executive assistant should not be considered clerical, 'cause she's technically management. Can I correct you?
That's correct. And the other, the consideration with my executive assistant is she is salaried, there is no overtime.
The other clerical there is?
The other clerical, okay, I will, not, I'll, I'll add, but yeah.
But just say then too, if, if that person does happen to go overtime, would that overtime be considered in the other general fund, clerical overtime?
No, it would still be within this one, but here's a, there's a small margin of about, uh, probably about five hundred hours difference.
And just to make sure we're talking, um, clarify our term, terminology here if I can, um, you'll notice that the first two digits on the chart of account numbers, you see like that zero one, that is the general fund, uh, regardless of which department within the oh one fund, that is one fund, that fund itself is what we're- the oh-one fund, that is one fund, that fund itself is what we're defining as needing to be balanced. If you look at the total revenue, total expenses under the oh-one twenty-one, which is a police department section of the general fund, it's going to be at a deficit, because that's a natural of the police department, and, and I don't think anybody here is advocating that the police write more tickets necessarily. Okay, I'm, I'm just saying, because, you know, we don't expect them to be self-sufficient, it is the public services provided to...
So as a general chief, as a general statement, are you planning on hiring additional officers next year?
Yes, and, uh, if you, if you want to go, Mr. Holson, if you'd like to go through all the lines, we're only about one line away from the explaining of that to you.
Perfect.
Um, the, the next line down would be me, uh, I don't make what Chief Creusel made in two thousand and ten, he left, and I'm asking for a small raise relative to the same that everybody else in the board's got, which is about two and a half percent. Uh, if we move down to the sergeants, uh, I'm asking for five percent raises each for the sergeant, and the reason I'm doing that is because according to our collective bargaining agreement, if we promoted a corporal out right now, the corporal would make more than the sergeants are going to make, and next year, as we start paying our increases in CBA, my patrol officers are going to make more than the sergeants make at the senior level. So, uh, that's why I asked for five, it would be the two and a half percent that everybody else had gotten in a normal raise, a two and a half percent offset. And part of that, if I could, if I may, Chief, part of that had to do with the fact that while the CBA stuff was going on, the sergeants were kind of left on their own. The sergeants were left without a raise for three years in a row. Uh, we, we, I, I, um, cajoled and, uh, backslapped and did a few other things to get them to accept the three percent raise a couple of years back, so that would have gone one percent for every year they did not get a raise, therefore they did not come up to what it was in the collective bargaining agreement at the time, and we were trying to obviously save some money, and they're good enough to, you know, roll through the punches with them. And, uh, in that, in those same terms, uh, using standard deviations to predict overtime, uh, we've raised the overtime up from ten to eleven-five for the sergeants. Uh, now to get back to your question, Mr. Holson, yes, I'm asking for two people this year to replace the two people they had retired. Um, in the, in the past, uh, in two thousand and seven going into two thousand and eight, when this esteemed panel voted to, uh, staff us at fourteen, it was, it was what we needed at the time. If, uh, you take a shift relief formula, which is a common practice throughout the industry, uh, that number is generally multiplied by one point six seven, it never goes below one point six six, it generally doesn't go over one point six eight for a shift relief formula, we have nine shifts to fill, and that would mean we need fifteen point oh three people. You're never going to get a point oh three, uh, we're not positioned to have fifteen, but we already have part-time people. So, uh, replacing one person with a part-time person in the type of shifts that we're running, we manage to be able to do over the years. Uh, the, the reason that the budget reflects the eighty-five thousand, one hundred dollar increase is because I anticipate, if we do get to hire, if the board, uh, Fire and Police Commission does act, we should probably see people available by October to be hired, and that five eighty-five would take care of our CBA amounts that are increased, and a happier service from the two people that we would potentially hire. Moving into the, the overtime, again, the offset is not at two standard deviations of that full amount to make sure that we have enough money to cover the overtime. Now, overtime will go down once we've hired two people, and, and historically, we've had overtime as low as twenty-four thousand within the last few years, or in excess of fifty thousand this year, because we backfilled and, and paid, uh, back pay in the contract. So, uh, we're slightly over what we would have budgeted for overtime this year, uh, because of that, and I don't want to put us in a predicament where we wind up being that again, even though I anticipate not having as much overtime going into the future once we staff at it, because if somebody calls off, right now, I'm obligated by contract to replace them with a full-time officer at overtime. If I have my three people on a shift and my minimum is two, and one calls off, I don't replace them, it doesn't cost us overtime, and that's one of the reasons why, uh, I'm wanting to get back to being fully staffed. The other reason is, is purely the workload has gone up. When I originally proposed this, and we originally did this with esteemed panel, that was in place at the time, in two thousand and seven, we were average, we were going from eleven to twelve thousand calls in a year. Last year, we did fourteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine. Uh, this year, today, we're just past the first quarter, we're already at seven thousand, three hundred and fourteen. Those numbers are not going to decrease, they're going to continue to e, increase, and if we can get our staff back to what it was in two thousand and eight, I can save money in overtime, uh, that's for certain, uh, we'll be able to put more cars on the road when they're supposed to be on the road, and we'll be able to keep, uh, you know, overtime down because of that, and, uh, if, uh, you know, if anybody, if anybody needs to actually see the math, I'd be happy to do that for you, um, but I was hoping that, uh, that somebody had a personal, a question that they wanted to ask me, I'm absolutely available during the day, I can go through that whole thing for you. I can even produce, I believe I can still produce a report that I gave out in two thousand and seven, to show that we needed to have fourteen full-time police officers working in order to be able to staff this place adequately, and that's my purpose in asking for it. And trust me, Razor, I know you had also were reviewing the, the CBA, and I think a lot of this comes into play now, we're looking at part-time, you're also, you're also looking at increasing your part-time staff, because you've lost a lot of that... Yes, yes, I am. Uh, we, we've recently finished one background, uh, a man named Michael Nardi, and, uh, as soon as I have his paperwork in mind, I'm going to recommend to the board that we do hire him at part-time, and, and we're continuing, we have two more that we're going to continue to look at. I, I don't ever want to give this board, uh, police officers that you would not be proud of, and, uh, that's the reason this has taken so long, and that's the reason we're so thorough, because I'm not, I don't advocate for anybody that, I don't believe this is worthwhile.
Certainly agree with the concept of the additional officers, no question about that, I guess my concern is the overtime, um, it's going up dramatically. Um, you've got officers, I see the wheels, and we, and we approve them every couple of weeks, and we've got some people who work in a tremendous amount of overtime in the police, which, um, can not only lead to the cost of the overtime, but people who wear down then become susceptible to injury, et cetera. I'm concerned that we're going up on the overtime, not going down next year, how do we mitigate that process? And thank you for calling me esteemed, I think you're referring to the other five, no?
You're referring to the previous board.
Yeah.
And didn't include any of us. All present, by, by the way. Like, uh, the reason that it is up, up is strictly because it's a statistical number, a standard deviation, twelve percent of our intended, uh, regular budget goes towards overtime, I don't think we'll spend that, and I, I, um, I'm also gun-shy enough to know that if I tell you that we're only going to spend thirty thousand dollars and I spend forty-two that year, that I'll be answering for that. So I'd rather give you an honest answer and say that in six months, uh, we're going to spend some money in overtime, and in nine months, we're going to spend more, because three months at that time is going to be those people away at an academy. Our first availability to them, I see people being hired probably by October, our first availability for them to actually be on the road, physically on the road by themselves would be after the first of the year.
I guess that's the part that confuses me, Chief, is it takes that long to hire somebody to get proven and named?
Well, if, if we advertise today, would you want to give more than thirty days to, um, for somebody to come in to make their application, uh, because if, if you don't, we're not going to get enough candidates in to get, or could qualify and pick some. The last time we did this, uh, we advertised for about forty-five days, and then after that forty-five days or so thereabouts, there's another short time period that, uh, has, uh, notifications when the orientation's going to be, that's a date that's, uh, the testing is set up at a separate date. Usually all of that takes a few months, and, and it's not anything that we can, you know, the, the testing service is going to be more efficient at this than we were, we had to do this in-house before, because, uh, we just did not have the money to be hiring people to do all the stuff that, uh, we're going to be doing now. But, um, I don't want to be disingenuous and say that we're not going to spend overtime money, we are. I, I don't think we'll spend the sixty-six thousand dollars, I, I truly don't, but I also don't want to give you a number that doesn't represent what's factual and statistically correct. I, I'm not, uh, not saying that that's the number you all have to accept, if you tell me that fifty grand is all you get, then that's what I'll take, but...
Well, yeah, I mean, I get, I thought fifty thousand was excessive, but I understood why you spent fifty thousand, because you were shorthanded. So I would assume that if you get the people, then you'll spend less on overtime, and statistically speaking, you should.
We, we will, we will, but, um, I'll, I'll just, just because of experience from before, I can tell you that in two thousand and eight, when we anticipated a lot less money, we actually spent more money in overtime than we'd ever spent before after we hired the people, because one person went down for six months with a blown-out knee, then another person went down for three months with a, um, uh, gallbladder, I believe, was taken out, and then another one broke an ankle.
So the overtime is not because of people shortages, or because of workers' comp?
It's because we have to replace people on certain shifts, not every one of those shifts is going to have all those people in there. And we have a requirement that... You know, a minimum of two people have to be unstaffed according to collective bargaining.
No, I understand.
But if somebody's out on an injury, or, or disability of some sort, there's... If we have somebody out for an entire year, we're in the same situation now that we, uh, that we are now, which is, we have to replace them, uh, with overtime, and we have to replace with overtime for the first thirty days of an injury before we can start putting in part-time people in, which is what we do.
I understand. So you're asking for two people, what does one person, one officer, cost you per year? Almost.
Uh, the, I'm sorry, the number is forty-three thousand dollars, I believe, is the, is the...